All right. Good evening, everyone. Modest attendance tonight. All right, as Chair of this meeting, I need to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. School committee members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Elizabeth Albota.
Here.
Mary Brantley.
Here.
Hillary Griffiths. Hillary is muted. Is she frozen too? All right, let's move on. Natasha Rivera.
Yeah.
Muted.
Maybe we can get Hillary back. Hillary, you're muted. And now she's completely gone. I don't have her on my screen.
Difficulty.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm here now.
All right. Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Colleen Andrade.
Here.
Jeff Ferrante.
Here.
Charles Gabron.
Here.
Oh, there you are. Brian Haas.
Here.
Wayne White.
Here.
This open meeting of the Maynard School Committee is being conducted remotely as allowed by the Act Governor Baker signed into law on June 16th, 2021, and Act extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency includes an extension until April 2022 of the remote meeting provisions of his March 12th, 2020, executive order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. The new law has two major parts. First, the new law allows public bodies to continue providing live, adequate, alternative means of public access to the deliberations of the public body instead of holding meetings in a public place that is open and physically accessible to the public. Second, the new law authorizes all members of a public body to continue participating in meetings remotely. The open meeting law's requirement that a quorum of the body and the chair be physically present at the meeting location remains suspended. All other provisions of the open meeting law and regulations such as the requirements regarding posting notices of meetings and creating and maintaining accurate meeting minutes remain in effect. Public bodies are reminded that notice of all meetings must be posted at least 48 hours in advance, not including weekends and holidays, and the meeting notice must clearly specify how the public may access the meeting, whether in person, remote, or both. This committee is convening by Zoom video conference as posted on the district's website. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating via video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording, which is audible to and viewable by the public. Additionally, please let the chair know if you are recording or broadcasting this meeting. Prior to doing so, use the raise your hand function. Now, if you are planning to record or broadcast this meeting, so I can make note of it. I do not see anyone raising their hand, so I'm going to assume that no one is. All right. Most of the supporting materials that have been provided for the members of this body are available on the Maynard Public Schools website in a folder titled 2021-2022 Agendas, under the tab Agendas, under the tab School Committee. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda and documents unless the chair notes otherwise. Any citizen wishing to make a comment to be read virtual meeting and entered into the public record may do so by emailing comments to commentsforscmeeting@maynard.k12.ma.us. Colleen, can you put that in the chat? For people to see, thank you. Please, comments need to be emailed in advance and will be received up until the citizen's comments agenda item is addressed. Please include public comment in the subject line and your full name and street address in the body of your email. Emails without this information cannot be read. To ensure that your statement is read in its entirety, a 350-word limit is suggested. Statements longer than 350 words may be cut short at the three-minute mark in interest of time, but will be submitted in its entirety for the public record. Comments are limited to three minutes or 350 words to ensure that everyone has the opportunity to be heard. The chair will read only one statement from each citizen. However, citizens can submit any additional comments for the public record by providing a copy to the chair via email up until the end of the meeting, specifically stating their desire for additional comments included in the public record. Please be aware that the purpose of the citizen's comments period is a devoted time for the school committee to hear from the community it serves. As such, the protocol supports the unidirectional public sharing of citizens' comments rather than a bidirectional conversation. Before we go to the first item on the agenda, permit me to cover some ground rules for the effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I, the chair, will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After the speaker concludes their remarks, I will ask each member in turn if they have a single comment, question, or motion that they would like to make. I will then go through the members a second time for additional comments or questions. Please hold off speaking until your name is called and remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. Please do not interrupt anyone who is speaking and cease speaking if the chair requests you so. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. So I will now call to order. Mary Brantley.
Here.
Elizabeth Albota.
Here.
Hillary Griffiths. Natasha Rivera.
Yes.
Lydia Clancy, yes. So the first item we have is citizens' comments. Do we have any, Colleen? Nope, I didn't think so. Okay. Urgent business, Brian, do we have any urgent business?
No, no urgent business.
Alrighty then, so we're gonna go right to the first item, which is Wayne's first quarter budget report.
Thank you. First of all, kind of a typo, this is Q4 or year in budget.
Oh, it is, it's an EO, okay.
And that's important because with the guidance that I got from the budget subcommittee, for those of you that weren't here, third quarter was different. Third quarter had a listing of the budget, the allocated budget, our expenses, and where we stood in terms of how much money we had left. I call it the budget versus actuals. So that is what, going forward, that's what I did in Q3 and 1, 2, and 3, that's it. But with the guidance of the budget subcommittee, I was asked to do kind of a year-end wrap-up. That certainly they wanted the numbers, but they wanted my perspective on things. They wanted some analysis and kind of, okay, this is what happened. This is where we are, and if I had a crystal ball, you know, how are we looking going forward? So the year-end is a little different, even though it does have the overall numbers in there, but that's why it looks the way it does. That was the guidance that was given. And so when I present Q1 of '22, you'll see, you know, kind of the Excel spreadsheet kind of columns and that type of thing. So moving right on, I want to kind of remind people that our original budget was $20,442,760, but there were two budget reductions that occurred for the 2021 year. The first was approximately in late spring, early summer for $150,000, and then there was a second one in the early, late summer, early fall for another $265,422. So we had all total a $415,000 reduction in our budget that we had to deal with. So in a report, for those of you, you know, you've had it now for a while, you know, the term of budget reduction, that's what we were, that's what I was talking about. So jumping right in, kind of my overview, the good news is we finished under budget, which for a business manager, that's always a good thing. You can never be over budget. And I talked about in my report that there were a number of things that this was obviously in a COVID environment and being the finance director, one of my things was I was concerned about was I knew that there would be extra expenses, if you will, operating in this kind of contagious COVID-type of environment, and would we have enough money and where would it come from to do all the things we needed to do in terms of disinfecting, testing, and all the things we need to do to keep the students and the staff safe? And so luckily, my concerns were alleviated and that the federal government stepped in, as you know, on television, no secret that there was the original CARES funding and subsequent ESAR funding, and there was also other funding that was handed out to school districts in terms of trying to catch students up that were disadvantaged due to the COVID epidemic. I talk about in my overview that, you know, there were possibly seven grants that we were given that helped us out, and I named a few of them, and, you know, they are the COVID reopening grant, ESAR 1, 2, and 3. We've not spent all the funds out of the ESAR grants, but we are using them. Something called a Remote Learning Technology Education Grant, a Coronavirus Prevention Grant, and a Summer School Expansion Grant. And what these grants have allowed us to do is to transfer many expenses that would hit the operating budget and in some cases, some salaries from the operating budget into these grants. And you hear me talk about the operating budget. Let me just back up a minute, and that the operating budget is the budget that Brian had submitted that you subsequently approved, that the town approved. That's the money we get from the town. But that is not enough to operate the district as a whole. I say that there are buckets of money or funding. The operating budget, the money that comes from the town, is only one source of money that helps the district operate. The rest of the money that the district needs to operate comes from grants and revolving accounts, or you hear me talk about revolvers. Those three buckets of money together provide enough money for the district to operate. For example, if I say you put Johnny in school from the operating budget, Johnny may have the building, Johnny may have the lights, Johnny may have the teacher, but Johnny would have no lunch because school lunch does not come from the operating budget. It comes out of revolver. So I just use that as an example to show you what I'm talking about when I say all of our funding, you know, comes from a variety of sources, and we talk about all of those in here. So again, we finished the year spending $19,535,000 and change, and our budget was a little over $20 million. And so that left a residual of $492,017. And so later on in the budget, I talk about what did I do with that? And I'm getting into detail, but the short version is, is I moved expenses from other places into the operating budget, which is the technical term. Another way to look at it is I took that excess and put it in some other places, and I'll talk about where I put them, put that money, and why I put it there. I give a kind of an overview on the revolving accounts. You've had this report for a while. I think that part is pretty straightforward in terms of revolving accounts. The overview on revolving accounts is revolving accounts, unlike the operating budget, which has to be spent from July 1 of a year to June 30 of the following year. And that is appropriated by the town, and primarily that is for education and curriculum. Even the referees at a football game are not paid for out of the operating budget. The revolving accounts are different in that they are accounts that are not restricted by time. The same thing with a grant. A grant, if you're given a grant this year, you know, it usually has a begin date and an end date. And so you're usually required to spend that money within those that beginning and ending. Revolving accounts are not subject to that. But there is a restriction on revolving accounts in that they're usually tied to whatever is the source of revenue. For example, the student activity fee revolving account is used either to supplement clubs or other things where students have paid fees for athletics. So for example, I couldn't take money out of the revolver to fix a boiler, for example, or the building facilities rental revolving account, which was very scant this year because we didn't rent the buildings out. That money is what is normally used to do repairs on our facilities. There again, we don't get sufficient money from the town in the operating budget to do all the repairs that we need to do to make the district run. It usually gets supplemented in that, you know, if people use our buildings or our facilities, they pay us a fee, and that goes into the building use revolving account. And then that money in there in turn gets used to do the maintenance that we need to do routinely, whether it be changing filters, whether we be, you know, whatever it is we need to do that is determined by the facilities people. So one of the things I was asked to do is to kind of give a conclusion, a wrap-up, and I'll go into detail about the numbers here in a second. But in my narrative, I said, you know, certainly while the pandemic was a terrible thing, and it certainly has disrupted a lot of people's lives, it could have been worse on the district. You know, luckily, we had some grant money to help soften the blow. But as a result of having some savings at the end, I think it has put us in a better position going into the next year or FY23. One of the main beneficiaries of this residual money is special education. For those of you that weren't here last year, in Brian's budget, one of the things that we asked for was additional money for special education.
What are you doing? What are you doing? What are you doing?
My mic's on.
Oh, sorry. I was.
What are you doing?
How was my mic on? I'm so sorry. Let me make sure that's muted. That's embarrassing. I'm so sorry.
Okay, I'm done with my report. See you. Where was I? Oh, so special education. So there again, if I go back to my example, the operating budget, special education, to be honest, is woefully underfunded. It just is. Because if we, if we try to 100% fund special education from the operating budget, it could suck up almost half, you know, it's, it's, and Jeff can speak to this better than I can. It's just, it is what it is. One of the things we looked at is I had to do a report and send to the Department of Education about any students that have aged out or graduated or whatever. And so it came, came to my attention that our per pupil spending is determined by the Department of Education is roughly about $19,500. Well, we had one special education student that just tuition alone, we spent almost $340,000 on. One student, and that didn't even include transportation. So again, one of the beneficiaries was special education, two ways. One, because we had money in the operating budget, I didn't have to pull money from Circuit Breaker as heavily as I normally would. Circuit Breaker is a revolving account. Circuit Breaker is specifically for special education. It is reimbursement from the state for extraordinary special education costs, and it's not dollar for dollar. You have to, the only way you get reimbursed is they take four times, in our case, it's 19.5. Education for a student has to be four times, like, for example, per pupil cost. And then anything above that, they only pay, like, I think it's 25% of, or 75% of that. So, you know, you're gonna incur a lot of costs. It's not a one-for-one. You only get pennies back on the dollar. But what we use that for is all those costs that we were talking about. We use the operating budget, and then if we have to, we dip into Circuit Breaker. So some of that money I had left over, I'm getting ahead of myself, went in the Circuit Breaker and some other accounts that we can use later on to help shore up and help me sleep at night that we're gonna be better hopefully in '23 than we were in '22. So on page five of my report, again, I kind of go back over our original budget, the budget reduction, what we ended up operating with, what we spent, and the remaining amount of money that was left in the checkbook, as, as, as I say. And this is mostly the result of expenses not occurring because, as you know, we were remote or, excuse me, hybrid for most of the year until about March and when we brought the students back in. So there were things that we didn't do or spend if we had had 100% of the students in the building. Also, there were some charges that we were able to put into grants and save the operating budget. And I just gave an example of some of the things where we saved, had some savings, some, some things I call instructional support or supplies. Special education, we save money because, again, we saved on transportation. And remember, I told you about, we had six students that either graduated, moved out of the district, or aged out. That, those savings were over $600,000. So we were able to absorb some of that into the operating budget and not hit Circuit Breaker. So the next thing I talked about, well, where did I put this money? And number one, you have no choice but to put them in revolvers. And the money that you have left over, if you have expenses to take, to use that money, you, someone asked, you know, you have to give it back. Well, in theory, the way the accounting system works, there was no money left because I moved expenses from these accounts into the operating budget, which used it up, which is another way of saying I put money back into these, these accounts. School Choice is one of those revolving accounts that I can use for a number of things. Historically, we have used that. If we, if Circuit Breaker runs low, you can use it for that. Last year, and I think going forward, I, you know, I shouldn't have to, that we were able to build up Circuit Breaker. When I came, it was around $420,000 in there. As of this printing, there was 1.1 million, and I think we've got another payment, we're up to like 1.3. Sounds like a lot of money, but like I said, you can have one student that can really put a serious dent into that. So, and also school choice, and again, being a revolver, it works. You don't like it, but it can happen. For example, something you use school choice for, you, you get a bill from a collaborative in, in October, and it's from April. I can't pay it out of the operating budget by statute, and so that has to come out of a revolver. You can use that for that Circuit Breaker. We talked about what I use that for. School lunch, I put money back in there, as we talked about. The operating budget does not contribute to school lunch at all. It is truly like I am running a business. All the revenues that I take in, which is from the reimbursement of the claims that we submit on a monthly basis, is how the program operates. So if anything happens that stops my revenue coming in, I'm gonna be in a hurt because I turn around and that revenue will write back out to pay fresh picks and to do all the things that we do to provide lunch for our students. Preschool revolver, I put money into, and also the student fee revolving. Preschool revolving, there again, is a program that is not run completely out of the operating budget. It, even though we, we charge a tuition, it doesn't cover the whole cost. So the operating budget does subsidize it. And so by putting some money in a preschool revolving, I can hopefully soften the blow to the operating budget by using money from there. And student fee revolving, again, if you, what that would be used for, for example, I got a call from a principal late May last year that student X family was experiencing financial hardship and wanted to know if we could waive the student, not the activity, but the student, I guess, you know, the things that you gotta pay before you can graduate, you know, library books or school lunch debt or whatever you have outstanding. You know, I was able to waive that, you know, number one, because I thought it was the right thing to do. But two, you know, you, I can use, you know, this kind of money to, to cover those types of things. So that's where the money went. The last few pages is a summary of the different grants that we have. And someone asked about, when I talked about some of these grants, that the money has been expended and be closed out. The way grants will work, remember, as I said, you know, you get grants and they usually have a begin date, end date. They usually is more than 12 months. Grants usually have a 27-month period that you can use them. But they, they do have a year associated with them. And so we have several of these that once, if you get, if you get an allocation of $50,000 for a grant, once you spend that $50,000, you send in what's called an FR1, telling them that you spent all the money, and that grant gets closed. And that's what I meant in that we have to send in paperwork that we have spent all the money, and those grants then are, are closed. And there are grants that we get on a recurring basis, like, you know, the, let me pick one here, there's the 240 special, the allocation, special education grant. You get that every year. You get an allocation that DESI determines this is your allocation for that year. So I have that grant, I have FY21 money, and then I get FY22 money. And you have to use the oldest money first. And so in '22, I could still be spinning from '21, but I, I spend that first, or I advise Jeff to spend that first. Technically, I don't spend the money. And then you move on to '22, and, and so long as you spend it on the things in the parameter of the grant, you're spending all this money first. So that's the listing of the grants. And then on the last page are the revolving accounts. We talked about what kind of, how revolving accounts work. I gave you a legend to kind of tell you, you know, where the funds come from and how they're used. And again, I think we're in pretty good shape in our revolvers as a result of our savings from, from this past year. That is my high-level review. Madam Chair, are there any questions?
I will go around and see. Mary Brantley.
No, I, I just love this, Wayne. You did, you've done such an amazing job with it. I really, really appreciate it. I especially like the last page with this, the legend about the revolving funds and what they can be used for, but the whole presentation is amazing. So thank you for your efforts.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Elizabeth. Oh, she's muted.
Hi, yes, thank you. Yes, so as Mary said, yeah, I think it was all, it was very clear. Thank you very much. It makes a lot of sense to me. You know, money is something, I'm not as, just as my husband is in our house. So it's very, this is, this is clear enough that I am following you, except the one thing that I am still a little unclear on is, and this is just for me, I know you said out loud that we had a 600K savings instead this year, but then on the report, it says 68,806. I'm just, I don't know what I missed there.
It's called fuzzy math. Now, so what it did is that stopped us from going over or me having to go in the Circuit Breaker. So it's not a one-to-one. If I hadn't done that, there would have been no savings, and I would have dipped into Circuit Breaker.
Okay, I got it. Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
All right, Hillary?
I think I'm good. I was confused when I first read it, but your presentation is like super helpful, and I understand it a lot better now, so I really appreciate you explaining it. A lot of it was just my lack of familiarity with budget stuff. So I really appreciate the time you put into explaining. Um so I really appreciate the time you put into explaining all of my questions and making it so nice and clear.
Thank you.
Natasha.
I'm just, I mean, I've had a chance to, you know, review this a couple of times. I just want to thank, you know, Wayne and the team for um. Putting this out in a very hard times with getting the year in, actually closing and short staff. And still being able to provide us the context of where we are to help inform our understanding. Of how the year, this challenging year has ended. So um just thank you for that. I know it was a big lift. I appreciate the work. And the commitment to to keep us on task and even today when we met, you're even the quarterly, which will be coming and the quarterly one, you were, you're just really committed to. Getting us that information and I just want to applaud you for um, you know, continuing with that. Um which is always helpful to understand that our 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 budget manager is really um. Providing that information so we can learn. We have new members as well, so it's really helpful for everyone to have an understanding. Of what we're talking about. Um the legend is fantastic to Mary said, so. Um the only thing I wanted to just comment on is I have not shared it beyond the school committee. And so I wanted to, just like I did with the the prior ones, I wanted to circulate it to the FinCom and the SLUT board and our. Town Budget Subcommittee, but I wanted to make sure our our our, we had an opportunity internally here to review it first. So I just want to let you know, I I do plan on sharing that um tomorrow. I'll I'll email it um beyond that and I think um. Colleen, if we can um have it posted, like, yeah, exactly, in the website like we do, that would be the other part that I want to make sure we um. We keep that there. So, thank you.
All right, yes.
I just want to say, oh, two more things. First of all, yeah, I think that's a good point that this presentation made is so that I now understand enough that the next time you present, I think I'll have a lot more. I will understand what you say next time much better. You know, it just gave me the context I need to go forward and I appreciate that. And the one other thing I still don't completely understand, I don't think about it, is what, why are we having budget reductions? What is that from?
It's from the town.
Yeah.
Okay, so over time, so they say you have this much money and then a- and then after that, they say, actually, we're taking away this much?
Yeah, right. From from the, from the spring to the the fall. Sometimes they will um reduce our budget. Look, what's approved, do we make a budget and then the fall, they're like, just kidding, or we have to take this away.
Okay, oh, I get it now. Okay, thank you so much. I appreciate it again. Thank you.
Hillary. Um along that um with the reductions, I know that sometimes that happens because of the state, the amounts from the state change. Um and but I know this happened twice this year. Does it ever, is that a normal thing or is it usually just once?
Well, first of all, I've never been in a district. Historically, what I've seen is. They're very careful about giving the school money because once they do. It's like you can't take it back because the school then moves forward with hiring, programming. And, you know, we had to really put our heads together when they cut. That second two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, we were able to still function and we lost no headcount. And that was no easy task, to lose over a quarter million dollars out of your budget and there was no reduction in force.
That's a lot of money. Last year with that, you did a fantastic job. I'm really proud of how you um decided to handle that.
Well, that was, Ryan was, we it was, it was a team effort. You know, we all sat in a room pulling our hair out, saying, how are we gonna do this?
All right, um, thank you, Wayne. This is awesome. This, like I I told you. When I saw you, I think it was last Thursday, that I think you're just doing an amazing job and this is making things so much clearer for us. And I really, really appreciate the work that all of you have um put into developing this. So um.
Thank you, appreciate it.
It's, yeah, it's a very welcome um change and and. And I think that the public will find it exceedingly helpful as well. So uh with that, I'm assuming there are no more questions. So we will move on to Charles Gabron's wellness presentation.
He's muted.
There we go. I just want to ask Colleen, do you have my presentation or you want me to share the screen?
I do, I can share it if you like.
Oh, go ahead. That'll make it easy. Yeah, thank you.
Well, Charles is not feeling great, you guys.
Oh, thank you, Mary. I look like a million dollars. Thank you very much for for having us. The purpose of our uh update, this is our first attempt to follow a new way of presenting. To let you know that there is a purpose behind the the presentation and we want to show the progress. We've made in maintaining and improving a safe and healthy environment for students and for staff. And also to explain that we have state and federal compliance regulations that we need to follow and demonstrate our district's progress in meeting them. In an exemplary way. And the members of the Wellness Committee, as well as the members of Safety Committee, are very pleased and happy to update. The School Committee twice a year on the progress of the work. It highlights the importance placed on health and wellness issues. So that's why we're presenting. Colleen, can you do that? Do you need to move forward? Oh, thank you. And as part of. What we're trying to do, we're trying to have our presentations connect to both the strategic plan and our superintendent and our district goals. And our 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 wellness and safety both tie directly to the mission statement about. Having curious, creative, kind, empathetic, uh safe and healthy global citizens. And we value our commitment to inclusive practices that support all students, particularly social, emotional learning. Restorative practices and cultural proficiency. And because of the nature of these communities, parents and community members are involved, so this connects the superintendent's goal of sustaining. And improving family and community engagement. We'd also like to say that we're uh very pleased that this year we have two. New teacher chairs. Uh the Wellness Committee is Michelle Basala and the Safety Committee is Ned Banta. Each teacher per uh is a teacher chairperson and this contributes to. Our superintendent's goal of really increasing distributive leadership, which I think you've heard uh quite a bit about. Uh next, if you could. Yes, two new priorities uh that we're excited about this year. The first, and I want to thank our superintendent. Because we were accepted into two innovative programs. The first is the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education's Wellness Coaching Program. A wellness expert will help the committee make recommendations to the major school committee. To update the existing policy in the areas of nutrition, physical education. And health education and we uh met this morning with the Wellness Committee. We have a date in November sixteenth. Meeting with a a group of us will be meeting with the coach. We have an excellent. Uh policy as well as administrative regulations, but we can make it even better. To make sure we're complying with Desi regulations as well as best practices. And the second area we're excited about, again, uh thank you, Doc, um Brian, for helping us. Get into the I Decide program. It's sponsored by the Department of Mental Health. Mass General Hospital, Harvard Medical School and the Institute of Health and Recovery. So uh those are pretty darn great groups and this uh new program is designed to implement. Alternatives to traditional school suspensions and expulsions and we will be meeting on Tuesday. A group of us from Fowler and a group of us from um uh, I mean, high school. To uh get a a few more details on where we're going with this uh program. So it's in its infancy right now, but we're delighted to be. Accepted into it. Uh what do we want from the School Committee or what we like? We will be recommending modifications to the School Committee's wellness policy after a thorough review of federal and state expectations. And uh the, we've been asked to have this done uh by the end of the year. It's kind, uh it's, it puts us on a highlight, but it's nice to aim high. And uh we would um like to be able to present those to the School Committee and see how the School Committee feels. It's the School Committee's policy. And uh the direct job of the School Committee to be in charge of policy, so we uh we're going to come with recommendations. Um the second thing, and we are, I I think we've uh set December sixteenth. To have a presentation uh of, from the Wellness Committee. A a summary of our youth risk behavior survey, which was conducted in conjunction with Emerson Hospital. We actually met. With several um districts today with Emerson Hospital and um. We, you know, we have, we have the results. We have a a group of the wellness sub, Community Wellness Committee of its meeting. And we would like to present in, on December sixteenth, not only just the, not so much the data. But what we're doing about it, what we're planning to do, what the, what we've learned from the data. What we're, and what we're trying to do as far as our practice is concerned. This is, this is really exciting. And uh we'd also like to meet with the members of the School Committee uh in June. Um to just give an update on the progress. I think it holds everyone's feet to the fire when we have the accountability of knowing. That we're reporting in um in June and I think that that's important. Okay, Colleen, okay, uh most expensive, this is um, this is actually good news because most expenses. That will occur fall under our existing budget. Uh workshop costs, meeting expenses, professional development opportunities, substitute costs that all will all be covered without any negative budgetary. Uh impact. Recommendations by the Safety Committee are also generally covered by existing budget. When there is unusual recommendation, um uh we, and I know Wayne uh alluded to sometimes of some safety. Cause they will not be done, uh they will always be done uh in conjunction with our town safety officials. We have very good relationships with the Department of Public Works, Fire Department, Police Department. We were never even making a recommendation that would just be us. And uh we are continuing to pursue federal and state grant funding in conjunction with the town. Through Safe Roots to School Program and we going to have a a meeting on that this month, so those are the budget. All right, I'm going to just talk a minute about wellness. Um I think everyone knows it is by law. We must have a Wellness Committee. This is a little different than some of the other committees that were involved and we must have a Wellness Committee. It must be a group of individuals who's representative of the district. It must be a standing committee. It has to meet at least four times a year. And keep minutes and must make recommendations concerning the school health, wellness programs and practices. It's a little bit different than the Safety Committee because as I'd say, it is a state requirement. I have to say, I I think we do an excellent job, but. Just, just my opinion. We can have the um next slide. Um in wellness, we've had uh the four goals that will continue. We have the social, emotional goal. Um and uh last year, I know you heard uh from uh our guidance council, our counselors, our school counselors both. Uh and we talked about programs at um at Green Meadow and we talked about programs at Fowler. Uh we'll be um talking also about what has been going on in the high school. We have a physical activity goal. We meet with uh Safe Roots to School. We sponsored um bicycle safety, pedestrian safety. We hope to uh and uh get our walks to school um. Hopefully on days that we can uh do that safely. We um have a a school safety wellness goal. Uh we uh work in conjunction with the Safety Committee. On on wellness and uh wellness initiatives related to social media, vaping, drugs and alcohol. And of course, our I Decide is going to, uh program is going to fit right into that. Uh probably one of the things that takes up a a good deal of our policy. And a good deal of what Desi is looking for is sound nutritional practice goals. And one of the things we're going to do this year is really help with the public to underst- to, you know, better understanding. I know we had. Food Services uh report last year, but we want to have this on the front burner so we can show and have in our policy. Um exactly what uh is being asked for, so that is going to be something we were hoping to have a great deal of clarity this year on. We could can go into our next goal, uh just quickly talk about the coaching preview. Um it's called Massachusetts School Wellness Coaching, Perfecting Policy. Startup, of course, the School Committee is of course quite perfect in itself, but we're going to work on uh trying to make the policy a bit more. Perfect. Uh we want to complete a thorough assessment of our district's written wellness policy and make recommendations. We were hit over the head today about documentation, documentation, documentation. And so we do a lot of things so well. We want to make sure we're documenting all the things that we do. And once approved by the School Committee, the updated document will be publicized to stakeholders of the community. And and everyone will be aware of the official policy of the district. And Wellness Committee members are meeting, as I mentioned, and I said in the next two weeks, I mean this, but because of scheduling and the confidence, we're not going to be able to meet. Until November sixteenth, which is about three weeks from now. And we'll begin a detailed assessment of our present policy. Using a tool called WellSat three zero. And at at first, it looks overwhelming, but when uh I looked at the five-page document. Of our administrative uh regulations to go along with our wellness policy, we do cover quite a bit of what Desi is asking for. Okay, if you go on to the next slide. These are the six areas of assessment and wellness. Nutrition, education. Standards for uh child nutrition programs and school meals. Standards for competitive and other foods and beverages, which is always an area that people worrying, or what are they selling at lunch? What are my kids having? Are they having ice cream? Um uh it's really good to to look at that and to look at that through our policy. Physical education and physical activity are are uh physical education and health education teachers are very excited about that. Uh of, you know, firming up the policy to just talk about. The uh importance of physical education, not only uh during school, but uh you know, as a life practice. Wellness promotion and a marketing and then the implementation, evaluation and communication. And as I mentioned, we're fortunate to have a school wellness policy and administrative wellness, a document that addresses these standards. Our goal is to bring better better clarity to these documents. If you can go to the next one, I Decide. I Decide stands for Drug Education, Curriculum Intervention, Diversion and Empowerment. And we're very excited to be involved in this initiative and will be updating the School Committee. We were accepted into the program where we're one, we're we're new at this and the program is new with this. And uh in uh another example of distributive leadership, several educators have volunteered to be point people for their schools. And to be trainers. The trainers aren't necessarily, uh they can be nurses, they can be phys ed teachers, they can be counselors. But people who will be um be be trained and helping students with the educational component. We have seen some of the. Uh videos that go with this program, they have, we have felt that they have been absolutely outstanding. Um as I mentioned, when you're talking about the Department of Health. Uh Department of Mental Health and Mass General and Harvard Medical School and the Institute of Health and Recovery. You know, we've got some very uh great uh research behind, so it'll be exciting. And our next slide, uh I don't want to be short on the Safety Committee highlights, so I'm just going to tell you a few things. Uh safety protocols around COVID nineteen, they have been our top priority over the eighteen months. Uh we've been fortunate to have great presentation, representation from teachers, administrators, guidance counselors. Nurses, paraprofessionals, parents, community members in town, safety officials. Uh we were so fortunate compared to some other districts that when COVID struck in in March of twenty. And we didn't know, no, we didn't know where we were going. At each building, we formed teams of teachers who worked during the summer to make uh schools accessible. We had an ad hoc committee consisting of a number of people from the town and it put it, not necessarily put us in perfect shape. But it put us in pretty good shape and we were able to address things that came up immediately. And we're just very pleased with that. And I want to give a shout out because I felt our school nurses have been our MBEs, our most valuable educators. They have worked tirelessly. I cannot tell you how much nurses do to keep our students and faculty as healthy as possible. During the pandemic and they still, it's it's unbelievable all that's going on. And uh we are very pleased that after a short hiatus with the help of some dedicated volunteers. We're but we're putting the final touches on a district comprehensive emergency planning document. And as I mentioned, documenting our procedures and practices is essential. If you could uh go to our last slide, I'm getting there to the end. We uh have had incredible cooperation uh from our police department, our fire department. Uh we have instituted again fire drills, I mean, Alstros fire drills. Safety instruction has been all taking place in in each school over the last. Safety instruction has been all taking place in, in each school over the last couple of weeks. We are set up a procedure for a better documentation of fire drills. What do we learn from each one of them? What do we learn? We, we have people who, at each building, we have several teachers who have been trained in safety care. They have formal training on how they deescalate situations. And we want to make, we want to make sure we do a better job documenting so people know all the things that are happening in each school. We hold our district safety committees once a month. I makes it possible to address any health and safety concerns as soon as they arise, very timely manner. That's one of the things I'm most happy about. We, we, as we get on any problems immediately. Each school has formed a crisis team, written building procedures to be used in the case of emergency. And we deeply appreciate the partnership we've developed with the school. We now have a new school resource officer who will be starting. Tristan Mancuso has been helping out with Allison McCann, who is a, a police officer, is going to be very involved in the schools. We appreciate the fire chief's involvement, Jason, our DPW director. Community members who care deeply about the safety, the needs of the students and staff. Jerry Colbert, who's been a, an outstanding person in helping us using his expertise as we form safety documents. And a shout out to Hillary, who's been serving on the safety committee and Mary, who's been outstanding in our wellness committee. And that, that is our presentation.
Thank you very much, Charles. That was very thorough. All right, I'm going to go around, Mary.
Um, just exactly what Charles said, so it's a great group. Actually, we learned something new from Heather today from Fresh Pick. Is that we can actually be providing our students with free lunch when we have the early release days. And it's, it's also paid for all this year. So I think we're gonna take advantage of that. So that was, yeah, Heather's been a really great resource as far as providing us with any opportunities that we've gotten. I'm really excited that we've got the new school resource officers, so a lot of good things going on, so that's it.
All right, Elizabeth.
Um, well, first of all, Charles, thanks so much for the presentation. And I have, I have some questions about like, for example, the new I decide. And the new wellness coaching program. When do we, I'm, I'm not sure when we hear more about how they're going or what's going, or, or what's the update with that? Can you tell us more about that?
Right, we'll, we'll make sure that we give you an update. Right now, we're a little bit in the infancy, but we'll make sure we, we can certainly do a quick update. In, in a few months, as a matter of fact, we will be presenting in December. So that'll be a good time on the agenda, just put a little bit about what, what we've learned from that. And how, and how it's going.
Okay, so that, so that presentation in December, when you talk about the youth risk behavior survey. Where you want to go from there, you can also kind of talk about what's going on the other two.
Because it does, it certainly, it, it's, it, it's certainly. Coincides with our I decide and the wellness coaching. We'll probably want to meet with the, first with the school committee, school committee's policy subcommittee. You know, to talk, yeah. And obviously it's up to the school subcommittee and the school committee, of course. We're, I want to make sure, you know, we're just making recommendations. This is, this is an area where it's absolutely policy is a view of, purview of the school committee.
Okay, and so, yeah, it is. And then the I decide is something that you're looking into to help to make recommendations about whether we should use it or not, or, or that you are.
No, it's, it's a, it's an area where we're going to, it, it to. We, one of the things that has been found through research that when students are involved with drugs and alcohol. Suspensions and expulsions are, are not effective tools. Now, obviously, a, a student is an absolute danger to, to a school. That's, that's a little different, I mean, you know. However, in many, many cases, education would be, is, you know, is something we want to do. And we want to be able to train facilitators to help students. Make better choices when it comes to drug and alcohol. And it doesn't, it doesn't matter what the substance abuse is. It's, you know, it can be drugs, it could be alcohol, it can be prescription drugs. It's for any kind of substance abuse.
And, and then I know it's in the infancy and this might, you might not know this yet, but what is the timeline you're thinking for, for that program?
We'll be able to tell you a little bit more on Tuesday. We're meeting with our facilitator on Tuesday.
Okay, okay.
And we're in with a number of other districts and it's all brand new to us. So we'll, we'll hopefully be, you know, a little bit of learning as we go, but we'll have the advantage of working with other districts as well. Let's see, you know, the, you know, what, what seems to be working well.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you, appreciate.
Ditto, thank you, Charles, and everyone who participates on these very important committees. I had two, two questions. One was about the, the grant for the Wellness Expert. I remember there was some mention last year about PE and graduation credits for the high school.
Bingo.
I was wondering if this would help inform like.
As, as you speak, that is something where we've actually taken some strides to that and I've been working with the high school. So that'll be, that will become, that will be, you know.
So that would be part of this whole process as well, terrific.
And we'll be talking about that as, as, as part of a policy, yeah, right.
Great, great, no, that's, that's, that's helpful because I was like, oh.
And it doesn't mean that there needs to be a physical education and health class. It means it has to be opportunities through grade twelve for physical entry. There has to be activity and.
Right.
Yeah.
And, and so they will help inform how, how to achieve that in a, in a way that's, that works for, okay, terrific. Thank you for clarifying that. My other question was, looks like part of the recommendations for the Wellness. Expert will be also about health education. And you, we talked about the, the, the youth risk survey that goes out every year. I know part of that survey speaks about sexuality and education among those areas. But I didn't see that in any of the, the goals. Has there been conversation on how we may or may not want to incorporate some education there? I'm thinking like, like consent, those type of maybe.
Yeah, definitely, it's, it's definitely, thank you for bringing that up because it's definitely a very important area and it needs to be addressed.
Okay, okay, is that something that will be part of the conversations as well, or is that maybe not a priority?
I hope so, I hope so, if, if, if not, we'll bring it up.
Okay, great.
It's on the minds of, it's on the minds of many people and.
I just remember being on the survey and so that's where I was wondering how we would be translating that to a potential goal or discussion for informing the future policy. Okay, great, thank you very much.
Oh, thank you.
Awesome. Hillary.
Um, thank you for including me in the last couple of safety committee meetings. It's been.
Pleasure having you.
It's been good to see the progress and hear about the status for each of the schools. And I really appreciate the work that you're doing to try to avoid the suspensions and expulsions. For kids, because it's crazy to think that, you know, suspending a kid is going to fix any sort of problem at all. Um, and I was wondering, what sort of role does the wellness committee have in curriculums and such for sex ed? And I know that there's laws.
Right, exactly. We, we could certainly make recommendations. It's a, one of the areas that we were so proud of last year, Hillary, is that we had some students. Come to the wellness committee to present. One student came and talked about what, what problems she had going through school because she had digestive issues. And didn't feel it was quite the understanding. I mean, we, from that, we made sure all the administrators know, knew about that many teachers. And keeping that in the, in the forefront, I think that that was very important. We also had a presentation by a couple of seniors who talked, seniors in high school. Who talked about the need for more, more, more area in the whole, I, mental health area. More, more instruction, more kinds of information about that, which we've taken certainly, any area which we really want to talk about. In the past, we had a, a presentation by a student who talked about the pluses and minuses of what she felt was sex education. In the schools, and let me just say, we didn't get an A plus. So we want to, it's an area that, it's an area that we definitely want to address. A very sensitive area, of course, but one we want to address. I don't know, that's answering your question.
Yeah, I know that there's legislation to. Require the sex ed be accurate and inclusive and cover consent. And I didn't know if that was something like we could work on before it's required.
Right, we actually have quite a bit in the, in the old health, the, the health, there are health frameworks, there are actually frameworks. Curriculum frameworks and health, they're, they're, they haven't been updated for several years. So it's good that they are updated. But yes, there, and that is something we need to, it, it won't be, and I think it's, it has to be an, an initiative. Not only for the wellness committee, but also our professional development committee, because I do in curriculum areas, because I think we need. I, I think at, at times, people are a little nervous about this, but. I, I think it has to be more than just health education. I think it needs to be an area that our nurses will tell you, we just need to be open and honest about some things. So, okay, we, we have some work to do, but thank you for bringing that up. I think that's so important.
Oh, thank you.
All right, thank you, Charles, very, very much.
Good, I have, can I do one more thing? I like to.
Yeah.
Ned Banta, who's on, he has had, he had some professional responsibilities tonight, but we managed to get on the call. He is our teacher chair of safety. He has been working like crazy, I love it, love it, love it. And I wonder, Colleen, if you can unmute him and maybe you could just say hello.
That could be, okay.
Yep, okay, there you go.
I teach computers and Latin at Fowler. And I'm enjoying this, I've been teaching for thirty years, have been on many safety committees and facilities. And I'm really impressed at how quickly managers reacting and taking our concerns as teachers very seriously in the safety. Since we're really the ones who have to lead those children out and keep them safe. So I'm enjoying it and working with Charles is great.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
We're delighted to have you, great.
Thank you, Ned. Okay, yeah, Natasha.
I had one more question for Charles, actually, was about the school resource officer.
Yes.
Will we have an opportunity to meet her soon? As I know, we've done that in the past with.
Sure, let me talk, let me talk to Brian and see how, how working into her, into her schedule is. As I said, she's brand, she's brand new, is our first introduction to her was just this week.
Terrific, I would love to, I'd love to meet and hear more about her.
Do you know, our last resource officer loved working so much, she gave it up to go into teaching.
Oh, really?
Wow.
Cheerio?
Yeah, yeah.
Morel, yeah.
I wondered why she laughed.
Right now, she's working as a paraprofessional in a, in a school. She loved, she just loved it and she was in the school, you know, she was in the classrooms in the school so much.
I'm glad she got inspired so much.
She thought she had, she thought she had a different calling than to be a police officer and. Isn't that wonderful?
That's a great story, thank you for sharing that.
And we set a good example for her.
Hillary.
Natasha, the new school resource officer ran the youth police academy this summer. With Gianna and the kids really, really loved her.
Oh, good, oh, wonderful.
Nice, that's, that's awesome, I can't wait to meet her.
And if we could, if we could also have Trista be there, I'm sure she will anyway, being introduced. But Trista's got some good feedback on, on the great things that they've done.
Right, and we'll work with Brian, okay, to see what, what's the time for that.
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you, Charles, thank you very much.
If it's okay, I'm going to bed.
Yes.
Yeah. So much, bye bye.
Okay, next we have the school committee draft goals review. There was some back and forth about that. My main. Point of having it on the agenda was just so we could have an additional conversation. It wasn't to like make, put pressure on finishing it faster. It was just that we have our meeting with the select board next week on the twenty sixth. And I didn't feel like we had had enough conversation going into that to discuss our goals. Intelligently or cohesively, so I just wanted to. Get a, a read on where you guys are with the first two goals. And if we have any additional thoughts on the third goal, which I believe was DEI. So I will open it up to Natasha.
So I, Mary and I, we just, we, I think we, she and I need to get together the budget. But I remember that, and maybe this might be my recollection, is that the, the meeting next week with the select board is not going to be based on money conversations.
No, it's on our goals.
Right, but I thought it's not going to be budgeted, though.
Right, but, but we still, we're, the school committee is going to explain our goals to them and they are going to explain their goals to us. It is a conversation about our goals and the budget is, our budget is one of our goals, right? And we're, we're discussing how we can each mutually support each other. It's, it in, in theoretical sense, not in specificity. Okay. So like when we tell them, hey, look, we're, we're reevaluating our cost centers. That's part of our budget goal, you know? And what this means for you is that you will have a, a more transparent and better understanding of. What the school district does with their money. Does that make sense?
It does, I think it's more of, I had a different understanding of what the meeting next week would be potentially. I, I thought it was more about what is our shared vision that is not, like just as where we're going. I didn't realize it would, might be more of a analysis of our goals presenting to them in that way. So it's helpful context a little bit in, in thinking about it. I don't, and, and Greg's agenda wasn't necessarily clear that way.
Great in general.
Well, yeah, that's the, I don't know why he changed it, he changed it at the last minute. That was not the agenda that was presented to me, David and Brian. And, and so, Brian?
If I can, I.
Yep, please.
Had conversations with Greg, and I think the intent of the meeting is more like what Natasha's hoping it is. It's not about budget and nor is it supposed to be you as a body presenting your goals to them. And neither, I don't believe they're planning on presenting their goals to you for approval. I think it's an intention for you to share, this is what we've been talking about as a body for ourselves. And for them to do the same so that you as two groups know what each other are working on and how you're working on it. But not for approval per se in that style.
Oh, I didn't, yeah, I didn't mean for approval, but the way Greg explained it to me was it was going to be a goals discussion. But I mean, it, it looks like that it has morphed into something else at this point, so. So then maybe we don't need to have a discussion about our goals tonight.
Maybe it's good that we just talk about it, though, generally, like are we, like I think for, for Mary and I, so I have the paperwork for the budget one. And I, Lydia, I have the one, I actually was hoping you might be able to, the document that you, you typed it on, though. Do you have that? Because otherwise I was going to scan this and, and.
Isn't that what she, what you presented, Lydia, or isn't that what you?
Okay, I have the paper, I mean, I can retype the paper, it'd be easy if I just had the doc, like on, on an electronic document of what she did, is that.
I should, I.
If not, if not, I can, I can scan it in and, and do it, work off of it that way. I just wanted to.
I thought I uploaded it to the workshop folder that, from that on the.
Is it there?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, I'll check, I'll check again there, I think, I didn't see.
Yeah, both of them should be, and if they're not, let me know.
Okay.
So, big picture, can we maybe just ask Greg and the selectman what the purpose of the meeting is? So we go in and everybody's on the same page?
Yeah, because I asked, Brian's muted again. I asked specifically for a specific agenda so that we didn't go. so that we didn't go in there and get trashed again, like we did the last time. And they gave us a semi-specific one, and then they whittled it down and whittled it down, and now it's like discussion about shared visions. So we're right back where we were when I said I didn't want to have a meeting with just that vague agenda, and so I'm, um, I'm actually kind of irritated that they have done this again. And um, yeah, I, I would like to know, um, and Natasha, your email to Greg about the masks. I emailed him back in September about that and he said he was gonna take care of it, so.
I, I know, I, I imagine you did share the feedback, I was just annoyed that nothing has been said about it, um, and so, um, and also, you know, to, uh, I know, not everyone has privy, so basically, I, I do feel uncomfortable that we would be in a place where we're not wearing masks when we require our staff to wear masks in their workplace, I think it's really, you know, hypocritical, so. And just my own personal reasons, but I also think as an example to what we expect from our employees. And municipal staff for that matter as well.
No, I agree with you, I think they chose according to what I was told, although it sounds like there are like five different stories going around. Um, what I was told was that they wanted a big enough room for all of us to sit in and I guess the, the golf course, whatever
Golf course, yeah.
Wasn't, um, or the clubhouse wasn't available at this time for whatever reason, and so they wanted to choose a bigger room because we wouldn't all fit at one of the rooms in
Basement, we did the basement once down there, which
Yeah, we did, um, yeah, I don't know, maybe there's a conflicting meeting at night, I'm not sure, yes, Brian?
I think they chose the place that they chose, I think it's, I haven't seen it, I'm actually troubled that I'm gonna not be able to find it buried in the mill somewhere, but I think that was a strategic move.
I think it was too, and that's what I was uncomfortable with.
And if you want, I can reach out to Greg, and I agree that the latest agenda is kind of back to the first agenda when there's been a lot of conversations about why we didn't like that agenda, which I thought we were very clear about. I thought I was clear that it was too open, and I wasn't here last time, so and Greg knows that, so he knows I'm kind of speaking not out of turn, but not from personal firsthand experience, but said we needed a little more specificity on the agenda than just this general goal discussion. And I thought we had moved in that direction.
We had, and that, that's why I'm really surprised that he, with the one that, that they've posted, because when he sent it to the four of us, went on Monday. And I wrote back to him and I said, I thought we were having something more specific. And then David made his suggestion to what the agenda is now, and so Greg switched the entire agenda to what David had suggested. I thought that was going to be in addition to the more specific parts of it, but again, it has, over the past month or so, it has been whittled down from specific topics to just goals discussion to now discussion about shared vision, and I'm not comfortable with that.
So on, so based on that comment. If every, if you all agree with that comment, do you want me to reach out to Greg after this meeting and say we're not comfortable with that agenda, the fact that it's posted is sort of irrelevant, if we're not comfortable with it, we need to make sure that the agenda is appropriate and we just need a reset on the date, so that if he needs to, if he can make, I don't know that he can when is, is it Monday, like, they're open in the morning, so if I said, he should be able to adjust tomorrow. Post it, right, Colleen, if he does it by noon tomorrow, that would still allow the meeting to happen, if it has an agenda that's agreeable to the school committee, I don't know if there's enough time to make that shift for you all to weigh in on that, so I don't want to speak on your behalf.
Natasha?
I mean, I am fine with it, because I really feel like, I want to, I would like to meet with him, I don't want, I don't want the receptive message to feel that we're resistant to meet with them and that it's, um, but I do, to Lydia's concern. The, it would be helpful that we can kind of go into it with some understanding of, of what is going to be informing our discussion, so I don't necessarily need a lot of structure in my expectation, but um, I also don't want it to be a Q and A interrogation um, style, where it's, they ask questions and we are supposed to be responding. If it's a joint meeting, I consider that a collaborative opportunity, and maybe that's what the intent is, and maybe that's why David didn't want it to be super structured, because he wanted people to, you know, freely, I've gotten that impression from when he spoke about it in select board meetings. That he wanted it to not feel so structured, and I think that's why he didn't want a lot of administrative folks there. Because I think in the past, it did come down to like operational practices and it felt very interrogation-y in some ways. I don't think the, it, the, the agenda captures the intent of that as, as great, I mean, I'm fine with it, as long as they, we clarify in the beginning of the meeting. You know, like, hey, let's, let's have, if it's about the master plan goal, like, you know, I mean, like, that's, it would be helpful to hear, like, let's be prepared to talk about our master plan goals or something like that, you know, it does feel a little bit vague, and I don't, I feel a little bit unprepared. And I don't like to go into something like, totally unprepared of, unless I just want to pick my brain on random nonsense, but, you know, I won't have anything at hand to talk about.
Right, right, and that's the thing, is I have been totally focused on the fact that it was going to be a goals discussion, because that's what was communicated to me. And finding this out and in the last minute, right, so now I, of course, I'm reacting to that, because I just found out, I'm kind of pissed, actually, because the whole point of us pushing back originally, and this was way back in September, beginning of September, was we will not agree to a meeting unless we have an agenda that we both, that is mutually approved and agreed upon. And that has not happened, they, they, they started with it and we were okay with it, and now it has morphed into something that was originally rejected, and so my issue with that is it's them not respecting us all over again, it is just indicative of how they, they view us and how um, little significance they um, place on our opinions and our contributions, um, yes, Elizabeth?
Hi, I was just wondering, what is the protocol for making agendas for meetings like this, do we have one already?
Well, it's hard to make an, a protocol for joint boards, like, I tried to come up with a communication protocol with the select board last year, and it was rejected out of hand, like, no, we don't do that. Um, so, basically, what it was, was Greg was supposed to come up with it, present it to me and David, and then we gave our feedback. And it was approved, and then it was shared with um, with Brian, and I, I'm not sure if it was shared with the select board or not, I don't know, but, um. Yeah.
So there was one that was approved already, and then it was changed, is that what I'm hearing? So can we just ask to go back to the original approved one and say this was already approved and this is what we thought was gonna happen, and so we should probably just go back to that?
Um, we, yeah, we could, um. I don't know if, I mean, that was the thing, as I said yesterday in my email or, or Monday, my email to them what happened to this other stuff, and Greg was like, oh, yeah, and then posted the, the, the new agenda anyway, without
So let's, let's prepare, let's just go off of what you, like, what did you, you know, what were you gonna do, like, we can go in, like, that was already agreed upon, like, that's what we I mean, maybe not talk about budget, but, you know, other stuff, you know, some other goals, if that's what was if they don't want to talk about it, they don't have to, but then that's what we're agreed upon, we're gonna talk about.
Brian?
Isn't the purpose, and maybe I'm not clear here, I thought, because I've read some of your notes about your goals as a school committee. I mean, isn't one of the goals to um, better the relationship between the, with the select board? So, my understanding was, that's really the purpose of this meeting, is for you to share and, and for me to help you share those goals that you have as a committee in terms of the relationship with the select board and clarity around finances, not talking about our budget per se, but just the process that we go through and types of things we share, and, and there were a lot of really good goals there. I think that's all the purpose is, that you're sharing what you are doing and how that will improve things for the schools and the town and the relationship with the select board, and I'm hoping that's what they're coming with, how they're doing that, because one of their goals, if I saw something, was to improve relations with the school committee.
Yeah.
So, I think that's what it's about, and I
Yeah, that's what, sorry, sorry, um, no, that's what I thought we talked about in our, in our workshop, is that we would say, here, here's what we're thinking for communication. And there was just something very similar, um, and so I think Hillary mentioned an email that the two of us would meet on Sunday, and we did meet uh, to kind of put together some goals for communication in general, and so we had some concrete things that we could get done at that meeting, like, for example, very simple things even, I think they're simple, I don't know. Uh, things like scheduling the monthly meetings between the, the chair, the town administrator and superintendent, you know, and having tho- those kinds of things put in place. Um, and one of the things we put as potentially getting done at that meeting would be setting up some communication protocols between the two boards. Um, and that was, I, we, I think we were thinking, Hillary, I'm sorry, I'm speaking for you and I'm wrong, but I think we were thinking of that workshop where we were talking about that being part of the meeting. Um, so I, I hope it's that, you know, I hope that that's what they mean when they say joint vision, which is their whole agenda, you know? Or, like I said, maybe if you had something more specific before, that was something that reflected what we talked about at the workshop, and I think we can just say this is what we agreed on and this is what we're prepared for, so can we please go back to that?
Hillary?
Oh, muted.
Um, when you, uh, what was the, what was on the agenda that you thought the agenda was gonna be?
It, it was, basically, it was um, select board sharing their goals and discussing them with us. The school committee was sharing our goals and discussing them with them, and then discussing how we could support each other in attaining those goals.
Were they individual, were they one year or were they long term?
One year.
Just one year, okay. I was actually hoping that we were gonna be talking like a five-year plan, because the, they always seem to, you know, we always seem to be missing that piece.
Well, again, so the select board, they're the ones who called this meeting, so I guess I, I sort of felt like we were following their lead a little bit, but when they originally said, we just want to meet and talk about all things Maynard, I was like no, because that's what we did last time, and you crucified us and I'm not gonna be in that position again. We need to have a more specific agenda, so that when we get off topic and you start to skewer us again. We can bring you back on, on, on to the agenda and follow what's on it. Now we're back to completely open field again, and um, it just, it
What if, um, what if we, because if it's about like relationship building, and if we feel that the conversation is starting to go into a more critique manner, that's not necessarily a positive building. And that might be a moment we can say, timeout, let's, you know, I think we're all adults, and just say that's not relationship building, you know, discussion, um, that is critical discussion, and I, I think it's you know, sometimes behavior just needs reminding, right, like, hey, that's not, and, and and it could be, some people just need reminding in the moment, when that, when that deviation or that pivot maybe happens, I agree, it's not, it's not beneficial, I I just, probably my personal feel is I'd, I'd rather try to give it a shot, you know, and
Oh, I'm not saying to cancel it, I'm just saying I don't know what to go in with now.
I agree, it feels a little bit uninformed, uh, but I think if we go in what we thought we would be, that's the best we can do. And if we just maybe need to be a little flexible, and if the conversation shifts to a more critique interrogatory way, we just, you know, timeout, let's not really a shared goal, we're gonna, we're gonna table that for another time. That's more of a, you know, we're coming here under a scrutiny um, discussion, and that's not, that's not the intent. So I, I think that will be the onus on us to remind, if it happens, to just push back, if that's what it is, I don't know if you're comfortable with, with that, but I think we all could probably, easily.
Elizabeth?
Oh, I was just gonna, so, is it impossible then just to ask to go back to the, the agenda that you do feel comfortable with, I don't know, logistics of that?
I don't know that it's impossible, but um, apparently my suggestions have already been ignored twice now, so I don't think that a third time around is gonna make a difference.
And, and it's more about the logistics at this point, too, because if it gets changed, then it has to be.
No, we have until noon, that's, that, but, but, but I'm, what I was thinking is that if we want, it, it's, it sounds like you're not, like, last time was bad experience, doesn't feel like a safe conversation, and what does help make something feel more safe is to have something concrete to hang a conversation onto, and that would be an agenda that has more concrete steps, so that if it does derail, it's, it's easier to pull people back and say, actually, our, our agenda's on this.
Well, we can make our own, we gotta post our own
That's what I was just thinking, I was like
Post our own agenda, and we talk about the things that are on our agenda, and if they want to bring up something that's not on our agenda, well, we say, you know what, it's not on our agenda, and so it's not open for discussion. And that's the way it is.
Okay, so then, what do we
She posted.
If it's a joint agenda, I believe it has to be a shared agenda.
Yeah.
They posted it already for them.
Right, and I sent mine this evening to posting, um, obviously it won't get posted till the morning. I believe as long as the location and time does not change, we have until Monday to cha- to send a revised agenda.
Let's just amend it to what we think we should be, we'll be talking, they can talk about whatever they want, but we'll stick to our agenda topic. It'll be our meeting as well, and that's what we'll, that's our guardrails.
Colleen, do we have to be that specific, or, because I mean, the, our vision could be either a vision for a year, a vision for five years. Do we really have to pinpoint, or could we try and create a sub, a sub-agenda?
Yeah, like, we could present it when we first start the meeting, saying this is
It's so generic, this one, that we could almost go in with anything.
Yeah, it is, it is very, very vague, their agenda, um, I can look into it more and see how closely we're supposed to align our agenda with theirs, since it is a joint meeting.
Well, I think what Mary's, uh, the other thing we can do is just go in and start the meeting, once we're there and say, look, this is what we have come prepared to discuss, and if you're gonna start skewering us about, well, I wouldn't say that, but if you're gonna start asking us about this, this, and this, we are not prepared to talk about those.
I was gonna say, everything that's been talked about here, communication, relationships, select board, goals, our goals, all falls under that vision, so.
Right, yeah.
And the second thing, I'll go back to you real quick, is what Natasha brought up, which is that I think it's important that we establish that we all will wear masks there.
Oh, yeah, no, that's
It was on
Mandated that.
Okay.
And it's on there, um, when he sent it out today, it did say mask required, yeah, now we just have to sign the room.
Yeah, there's a map, don't worry, they sent a map.
Okay, so we, are we good, yeah, Hillary?
Um, can we, so when Elizabeth and I met, we talked about um, trying to schedule the quarterly meetings, as, like, with the both boards and then the monthly meetings for the chairs, and then the communication protocols. Could we maybe give them a heads up that we would like to talk about those things?
Because, I mean, we've already been trying to schedule the monthly meetings, like, that's
I know, but
Already been working on, and I, I don't know that that's something that we need to discuss in that meeting, that's just Brian, Greg, me and David getting our schedules coordinated, so that we can set that, and we haven't been able to do that yet.
I think I was thinking that sorry, like, um, if our goal, if we have a goal to work better with them and they have a goal to work better with us. And we're gonna like, talk about that goal on Monday, part of that is making a plan to meet and doing it. Um, and then it could just be like reinforcement to that, even if
Okay.
It can be formalized at the time, but to sort of, all ten of us say, like, this is a priority for us to have, you know, all ten of us meet regularly, the two of you meet regularly, and to have a plan, to just sort of like, be all on the same page instead of a like, one-on-one thing that could be um, go off track with
Yeah.
Feelings and stuff.
Okay. All right, are we, are we good, are we, I will um, send something out tomorrow or Saturday. Um, just like what I'm thinking, and then you guys can give me feedback if you think that's okay.
Perfect, sounds good.
Oh, you said you, you, the agenda you posted had the mask requirement on it, too, you said?
My agenda?
Yeah.
And it did not mention masks.
No, but the one that Greg did, um, did require, it did say it.
Can we, can we make sure we add that on the amended agenda?
Yeah, it's a, face covering required for attendance is what the joint um, one said. Yeah, it's a face covering required for attendance is what the joint, um, one said.
All right. Are we good? All right. So next we have the superintendent report.
So I'm glad to be here tonight with all of you. Um, darn. So one interesting thing are, we are, you know, knocking on wood. Really, we are feeling very fortunate that our numbers, our COVID numbers have remained really low. Um, and I'm sure that's a combination of kids just being willing to wear masks and not pushing back and nurses really taking due diligence, every case that comes through their doors, really assessing, are they sick? And if they're sick, how are they sick? And really continuously working to follow all the different protocols from what we did prior to COVID. Just, you know, are you sick? And if you're sick, then what? Um, or are you sick and it looks like COVID? Um, so just the level of attention to detail is just amazing that they have to do on, on a daily basis all day long. Interestingly enough, our vaccination rates for students finally at the high school bumped above eighty percent. It was at eighty-four percent last week. So it puts us in the quantitatively in that position where if we want to have a conversation at some point, and I'm not prepared to have this conversation tonight, I'm just letting you know that. Quantitatively, we've hit that marker where we can have the conversation about not requiring masks at the high school based on student and staff vaccination rates. I'm not suggesting it. I'm not prepared to talk about it. I just want you to be aware that based on Desi numbers and what's in the news. I think there are two high schools right now that have advocated for, uh, Hopkinton and one other that I just.
I think it was Ashland was the.
Ashland, I think it was Ashland.
And I don't know if they've actually already removed it or just gone through. I think Hopkington did already apply. And Ashland applied and I don't know where they're at in that process. I just want you to know that we're able to apply if and when we want to have the conversation. We, we can further that along. I don't intend to do that tonight. Um, COVID testing is going well. We had a change in personnel from CIC, um, but we still have staffing. Um, and we continue to do testing, test and stay, which I'm sure is continuing to keep our students and staff onsite as much as possible, um, and symptomatic testing. Um, and I got an email literally about an hour before this meeting from our project manager at CIC. Who said they do have staffing for pool testing. Are we interested? I will, I, well, actually I'll talk with Kevin since he's sort of taking lead on this, Kevin Caruso, um, to see what the next steps are to how to put that into place. Um, so then we can start to do, have that before the holiday season for sure. So that as families are getting together and windows at home are being closed and, you know, we're heading into that, as we saw from Charles, we're heading into that flu season. Uh, we'll have another strategy that we'll be able to use that hopefully just catch anybody who might be sick before they're able to actually. Also included in the report were, um, results from the survey we did related. I don't know if we talked about, do we talk about this at budget today? Yes, I know we talked about it then. I'm like, what meeting was that? Um, and it was interesting, the it was the sort of standard survey that most of the districts used. Our survey came up and I most, the, the most common answer, which you have in front of you, so I'm not gonna read the whole thing, but it had to do with facilities, which was in- interesting. Um, facilities improvement and two of our three buildings are actually really strong in terms of facilities. Um, and we're making headway within those two buildings. Um, and the one building that's probably the weakest link in terms of facilities and whatnot, because it doesn't actually have an HVAC system and it's unit events, is Green Meadow. So there's not, so then we get into this, how much money can we spend at Green Meadow? And that's, you know, the answer is not a lot. We do have windows open and we do have the quality um, air purifiers that everybody was trying to get last year that we fortunately, for some unfortunate reasons, but fortunately have them in every space at Green Meadow. So even though that was a number one push from people. Um, number two had to do with, um, increasing personnel and services to support student needs. I was happy to see that come back as the number two, because that's in line with, um, our thinking, and, and again, academic support staff and things like that. It's in line with the MTSS model that we put in play this year, that's really assessing and gathering student data, sharing that with teachers. You'll get some report outs on that in the near future. Um, but that seems to have also been identified as a need even from the community and we're able to do that. Um, and one of the, the third one had to do with purchasing and or expanding high-quality aligned instructional materials. Um, and that matches up nicely with our literacy pilot and really being able to do that. Um, and, and assess what we need to do, especially at Green Meadow in terms of the literacy component. The other piece that, that we're doing, that we're about to begin on Monday in terms of the social emotional learning, which I'll invite, uh, Julie. Um, from the yoga studio to, to come to a school committee meeting, Charity said she would, we met this morning. Um, but it's really exciting. A lot of schools have kind of talked about how they might do yoga and integrate this and integrate. And she's put together a great plan. Um, she spent a lot of time really working with each individual school and the administration and the teachers and how to fit in what she wants to do within schedules. Um, she met with us as a leadership team. Um, and there's a lot of excitement around it because that's something that I think probably should have been done 10 years ago. Um, long before COVID, because it goes to, um, social, emotional and just health in general. So that, so work, I'm excited and I know the administrators are excited as are, as is Julie. And the teachers to really work this into the curriculum, build capacity so that, for example, in the case of the health teacher, the gym teacher. They'll be able to get the capacity and the skills this year to be able to move that forward next year, even if she isn't in their classroom. Um, in talking with her, sort of thinking about even year two of this. Would we be able to expand what we do with the students and build a component in for the teachers? Cause for those of you that have been in schools, uh, and you know, teachers, they tend to put everything into their work and they tend not to necessarily take the world's greatest care of themselves. Um, that is until they retire and then all of a sudden they look like different people, because they just aren't giving everything to their school. Um, or their kids. So really trying to figure out, uh, and this is really thinking and even just the beginning conversations for next year. Um, but I digress. Focused on this year, we're excited to have, um, yoga being in, implemented in each of the buildings in different ways in how it fits. Um, and I really like working with Julie. She's able to meet with the teams and really understand the different schedules at Green Meadow and at Fowler and at the high school and be very flexible in terms of what she's able to do. I'm sure it helps that she lives in town. Um, but that's probably one of the really exciting things that will come, that I think will come out of COVID. Um, just that we're able to do, because we're putting in some money into that, that we wouldn't have necessarily been able to just pull out of an operating budget. Um, but we have some, we, you know, that was a choice to put some extra money into social, emotional wellbeing of our students. So really excited about that.
All right. And just a follow-up on that, um, we met yesterday, um, this, this week, the Maine Education Foundation. We had a workshop to bring new teachers in and tell them what we do in that. Michelle, Missella, who is the Fowler teacher. She is actually going to do something at Fowler for yoga for the teachers. So that'd be a nice segue into expanding it for the whole school system. So just wanted to share that.
No, thank you. That's great. I like, I like that, uh, people are sort of thinking along the same ways of, because we asked that question. I know I asked that question of administrators and teachers, like, what can we do to help? And there isn't a great answer. Like nobody, you know, I wish there was an easier answer, not a cheap one or a simple one, but just an answer. It's like, you know, less meetings, more time, less. And we've tried to do some of those things to the best of our ability without negatively impacting efficiency and education and all of that. But there's still, this year is hard. People, it's October and people are exhausted. They, I mean, Elizabeth, you probably more than anybody on the screen can talk to it, just because you give it from the teacher perspective. So.
No, it's hard. It's very hard. Yeah.
It is. And for some reason, I think it's harder this year than last year. And I don't know exactly why, but I feel like it's early in the year and we got a lot of tired people and they're working really hard. So just something to think of. So I'm back to the yoga, really excited about that. I think that has great potential for our students in terms of just self-regulation and our students are struggling this year. And it isn't, when I say our students, I do mean our students as in Maynard kids in our schools. It's nationwide. It isn't just here. It's within the whole state. It's within the country. They're struggling to get back on how to be a student, how to come to school, how to be prepared, how to focus. So we're working with them and I think this is just another tool that we'll be able to use to offer them help, to help them regulate and help them be successful. And they will be, absolutely they will be. Some of the other things in the report had to do with NIES, which I won't spend a lot of time on tonight because we've invited, uh, Principal Karen Janice and Caruso and Charles. As well at a future, very, a near future, beginning in November, I think, school committee to do just the overview. So that school committee understands the accreditation process and why it's important and some of the benefits of it. And yes, it does cost money and it does take time and energy, but it has, um, valuable outcomes at the end of it. That's coming in the next month or so. Um, the other things, the, the last thing, the data equity work we're preparing, we did hear you, or I did hear you, I should say, in terms of our discussion around timing. And I realized that the last time we did this was before my time, but we did it on a Saturday and they were like, I think Charles told me like six people attended. Um, so if you've done it, if we did it that way, it was really, really low attendance, because it was a Saturday and for lots of parents. Maybe your kids are at soccer or it's family time or I, I, I don't need to figure out why, but it was really low. So it didn't make a lot of sense to do it in the exact same way, because it wasn't the data that prevented people from coming. It wasn't the structure that it was prob- I felt like it was probably the timing, but on a good night, we can get a lot of people at a meeting. Um, so we chose Tuesday, November 2nd. We'll add, do a little more advertising about that as it gets closer. And I've talked with Chuck and he's talked with the NHS advisor to have, uh, high school kids in the cafeteria so they can do like childcare. If the parents want to come, they can bring their kids and there'll be some games or whatnot that they can just draw, play. Wear a mask and stay safe, um, or maybe take them outside. If it's, I don't know, it's gonna be very dark by then. So that makes me nervous. I don't want to put them up for like that kind of job. But anyway, I think that will be helpful, helpful to have the childcare option. It's an hour and a half on an evening when people I think are used to meeting, so it's not taking a game away or something like that. So anyway. I wanted to let you know, we did hear, I did hear you in terms of, is that the best day? I may not be able to make it, because we do want people to, to attend. That otherwise it doesn't serve a purpose. I mean, the survey will go out, the survey went out, we'll get results from that, but that seemed to be one of the big pieces of information from the last time. I'd like to get some more people onsite to look at some, even if it's just minimal belonging type data, attendance, et cetera. Um, but to get some input from people. Um, so we did hear you and change that. Other thing which is in here. And I think I may have missed adding it to the, to either my report of the agenda, it would be the field recommendation. Unless it's buried in this agenda and I just missed it. It might be, there's a, a lot of words there, but we did have an internal meeting. Which this has been in the folder, so I know you've had an opportunity to preview it. Um, we had a great meeting. Mary was part of the meeting as well as some other people. And we really talked through our fields and what do we charge? Should we charge? Most places do charge. Um, we looked at, um, Concord Carlisle as a reference point. They're kind of close. But they're not quite as expansive as like Acton Boxwell, for example, which is, they're just mammoth. Um, and Sudbury just tends to be very high in some cases, um, even though they're also close. Um, and we looked and talked about some of the different organizations that we're in, in line with already. For example, the soccer and EVLL. And, um, in general, so, and interestingly enough, we tried to think about this in a way to give groups times to adjust. So we didn't want to say, this is gonna go into effect the Monday after the school committee votes, because that didn't seem fair to them. Because they've already done enrollment. They already have their teams, they've already, et cetera. Um, so we're really looking at July 1 of 2022 for most groups. Except for the Friends of Maynard Soccer Group, I don't know if it's Friends of Maynard, the soccer group. Um, that has had this ongoing relationship of sort of contributing monies, um, to the school. Um, or contributing things to the fields in lieu of paying rent. And there's this relationship that we had legal run through who said they may not have legal standing, but it may not be worth it to end up spending money that way. You, you would probably be best served by honoring it with a timeframe. Ended in a couple of years, so they would get an extra year, that particular soccer group. Um, so they would get this year and next year and end on July 1 of 2023. AVLL is a little more interest, is not more, I shouldn't say that. They're also interesting. We, for lack of a better word, have succeed, have given DJ's field to them, because we haven't done anything with it. In fact, it's a field that's the schools, but we don't use it for baseball, softball or anything. We hadn't used it, is my understanding. So we in essence said to them, and I don't know if this was the words and I don't actually know who had the conversation, but if you take care of it, you can use it. And they've done a really nice job taking care of it. They use it. It doesn't cost us anything. Et cetera. We don't, there's really no gain to break that relationship, although it's unique and it's a singleton. The one thing that I will, that came up in the discussions with the attorney, we're putting a MOU together with AVLL for that particular field to indemnify the school committee. In case somebody were to get hurt on the field, right now we would be liable for that, because it's technically a school field. Um, so that will be one piece that I'll have the attorney, I mean, once, if you approve this and want me to move forward, I will move forward by talking to the attorney to have them craft that and send that to AVLL. The other field that's adjacent to that is not apples to apples in the sense of that is not a field that we don't use. We do use it. We use it. We don't use it year round, but we use it for softball and we're not in a position to make that same arrangement um, with that field. Um, and in fact, the attorney recommends, don't make that relation, don't make that arrangement too many times. Keep what's yours, take care of it. Um, the one that you have, I just explained. And then the others fields, we talked as a group internally, just about how much should we charge? How much should we not charge? And we had a, you know, we looked at our website, we looked at others. Um, and then we sort of broke it into two categories, which you can see. Um, we started with four, because I was like, we can have lots of categories. And Mary nicely ghost slapped me and said, that would be so complicated. No one will track it. So let's rethink that. And we did. Um, and we came up with over two rates. And not-for-profit and a for-profit. So if you're a for-profit, you pay the rate on the page in the full column. And if you're a not-for-profit, you get a fifteen percent reduction. And that will be posted on the page as well. So you don't have to do the math, but it's a fifteen percent reduction. We added things to your comments, I think tennis courts. Um, Mary, tennis courts and we updated the.
We said custodians, uh, custodians were fifty dollars an hour with a four-hour minimum because, regardless of everybody, because that's what our agreement is with the, the custodian contracts.
Correct.
So, and then the other one was having to do with the kitchen. Um, that if anybody uses the kitchen, they can use the kitchen, but then they have to have a person on. Um, you know, they are from us and they have to pay thirty-five dollars an hour, just more to keep everything safe, make sure things are shut off and all of that. So.
Thank you. That, that's right. And that's pretty typical from what I've seen working in schools, that if you're gonna use the kitchen, you're gonna have, you'll pay someone in the kitchen to be there to make sure the gas is off, that the flames are out. They won't work for you, but they're making this a safety procedure. Um, so I felt good that we were able to really flush this out in some level of detail. And come up with a simplified rate scale that made sense. And it gives people, uh, almost a year to amend, you know, if they're used to charging twenty dollars for a season, they might need to charge twenty-five dollars. And I'm literally speaking out of chunks. I don't know what people are charging these days for soccer, but they may, they may need to increase a little to meet that, but they have an entire year to adjust accordingly. Or in, in soccer's case, two years. So that would, so you, you've had that in your folder for.
The relationship with DJ's field, DJ passed away when he was in the sixth grade. So that's been going on for 20 years, just so that people know that. So, but.
So my recommendation would be that, um, I have that recommendation made for you for the rental rates. And then the first page or so of the document was really context and background, so you understand what we talked about, what some of the history is. Why certain things we left alone, other things we wanted to give a slightly longer lead time for. Um, just so it wasn't random and haphazard that you understood that. Um, Mary, thanks for the explanation on DJ. I did not know. Mary, thanks for the explanation on DJ. I did not know the specific history there. So I appreciate that. Greg knows that I'm making this recommendation to you. He doesn't know what it is per se, but my conversation with him was that we needed as a school to set our policy first, and then we're happy to meet with the larger committee or task force for the town to talk about fields, but we wanted to be on solid ground going into those discussions.
Are you asking us to vote to approve this?
The rates, yes.
Okay, I was not aware.
People aren't prepared. It could wait, it could be a first read.
Okay, I think it's because it's not on the agenda. I, I think, I was thinking we were voting on it, but I just, as you said, it's not listed per se. I don't think we can actually vote on it as business. So it might be more of a first read.
We can, because it says at the top of all of our agendas, any, any business may be voted on.
Right, but it's not listed on, as a business item.
Oh, true.
So and it's not urgent.
First read and I'm, that's perfectly fine. We can, we can vote on it the next
People, yeah, people can send feedback to me and then I can forward it to you and, yeah, okay. Sounds good. All right. Thank you for doing this. I think this is great.
Ma'am Chair, I think you have a couple of hands.
I, I, I see that. Natasha?
So actually I had a question about something earlier in your report.
Okay, maybe it's not about that. Let me go back. Yes.
But no, it is on this. So maybe, okay, I'll ask about this since our minds are here. And I asked this in our budget subcommittee, but I wanted to just get clarifying clarity a little bit because I'm still, I think, a little bit confused. The custodian, we talked about like the fee for the custodian and how that would be like it's built, it's built in to that. So if I'm looking at this and I, and I see field on page two, it says for profit hourly alumni, 117.
Yep.
Okay. And then I see on the second page, it says custodian fee, $50 per hour, five, four hour minimum. Where is that total? Is that plus that?
Yes, it's a plus that and it would be on the form.
Okay. Cause that's what I was looking, I, I missed it. I thought you said it was built in and I, I, I wanted to, I was wondering, so it's, it's, they have to, it's 117. That's not an optional thing, right? That's a mandatory, okay. Cause that's what I thought I wanted to get a little bit clarity on. So it's really, someone would be 117 plus 50.
Plus 20, plus 20.
Plus 20.
Plus 200, sorry.
Okay. So maybe that's the layout. I was like the, what is the total, I guess, hourly without being for the field?
Sorry, for previously, when there was a form for just alumni field, that was part of the policy. So maybe we can discuss this in policy subcom and, and it can be, I can't remember what our field policy call numbers are, but it can be a da, 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 slash A for administration or something like that.
I think it's what it, what it's, what I would like to see is that that total, like that total, like 65 would actually be the whole amount. And then you could say includes da, 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 like, so that's the number that is the hourly rate, you know, and it's not, uh, it's not, it comes across as a little bit like optional, like, you know, this is the rate. And then if you need a custodian, it's $50 for four hours.
I could, we can add a, for example,
Yeah, I guess.
Field for an hour is $265, $65. Well, it's, you can't do 265, you can't rent it for an hour.
Right. But I want, yeah, that's what I would like to see that, that, that the total, like they see the whole number, right?
But this was just for our, our information, right? I mean, this isn't what's going to get presented to the public, is it?
Well, but I was confused when I read it because I was thinking it was like, like a separate, like optional, like if you need a custodian, it's 50, but from when we spoke early in the budget subcommittee, it's, it's mandatory regardless. And, and so I want to make sure it's reflected as the total amount for that rental. So there's no confusion, you know, like, and then the other part earlier in your presentation, talking about the vaccinations and, and for the schools, I, I've heard, which is on the news at the, there's a vaccination that'll be coming out for younger grades. It'd be great to hear when, as information unfolds in the next couple of weeks, if we would be thinking about having a vaccination clinic at the school. I know that earlier on, there was talks about having vaccinations at the school and the school would be a good place to do that for ease of rollout. So anyway, nothing that needs answering now, but I'd like to hear more about, about that. Or if CIS or CIC, if they will help with that in, in some way. That would be curious about that.
Absolutely. I'll follow up. And you're right. I mean, I saw it on the news myself that Joe Biden said, or President Biden said something about vaccines. I know it's like he's a friend of mine. He's not. I'll call him and ask. No. But it said schools and we had this conversation the other, like last night when I saw, I'm like, how is it that schools are going to do this? Cause we couldn't even get flu, I mean, it's hard enough to get a flu clinic, much less.
That's where I was a little confused on. So I figured information will be kind of trickling down in, yeah, in a couple of weeks. As I talked about, like even up in early November, things will be available, you know, so they're actually going to send them out before it even gets FDA clearance, I guess, to not to expediate the, the process. So anyway.
I will, as more information comes, I will make sure to update you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna go through everyone now. Hillary?
Oh, if you're gonna go through everyone, I can wait.
No, go on.
Okay. My questions for the fields are, if we vote at the next meeting, can the policy draft be shared with people so that people who want to weigh in have the opportunity to like read it and send comments? And then I was, I just want to make sure, like, are we, are we voting to make this be our policy as is, or for it to be discussed with the town's task force on fields?
I suppose you as a committee can go either way. My, my, all I would do is bring it to you as a recommendation to vote as is.
Okay. And I would second that because we have to take care of our own costs. What the town does is up to them, but this is, I think Wayne put it best when he said, you know, we, we have enough struggles to, we shouldn't be subsidizing this kind of scenario. So I think that's where we were saying, if we, if we give most groups a year to factor in their budget for next year, and then the soccer people, two years, it'll be pretty about as equitable as it can be. So, and also by giving the, the 15% discount for the nonprofits. So.
I think also the MO, MOEs can help, you know, build some of that structure. So, you know, as you're engaging with, you know, there's an opportunity there for conversation and, but what we do now just isn't working, right? And so I think waiting for the town to figure things out isn't working either. So I think under, under our jurisdiction, it felt like the right thing that we at least set our priority goals, help meet our needs and then see how that folds into what the town is looking to do.
I think I'm just, I'm a little bit worried about with the Boys and Girls Club because they provide such a service to people who can't afford alternatives that I worry about making things difficult for them. And then I wanted to hear more about the plans to, I'll, I know sports teams were planning to
Bless you.
Sell access to advertising on the fields so that money could go into maintaining the fields. And if we stop the current relationships we have with them and just make it so that we're totally responsible and charging them for use, I feel like they're, they sort of lose the incentive to work on that, acquiring that advertising and managing that advertising for us. And so, but it still seems like it's a good idea to utilize that revenue source. And then I'm also a little bit worried about whether or not we'll actually maintain the fields the way that the groups are used to them being maintained because they're maintaining them themselves now. Like, are we really going to, sorry, go ahead.
So I was gonna say the only group, and I didn't mean to interrupt, I wasn't, but just the only group who maintains any of the fields is EVLL for DJ's Field and we're not severing that relationship at all.
Well, they do some maintenance for Keenan, I know. And I know there's some maintenance that I think soccer does for Fowler.
They do. They do a little for Keenan because they use it, which they may or may not want to do. But they'll have to pay now to use the field and we'll have a revenue source to then pay to have it maintained. Right now, we're kind of at anybody's, you know, at their goodwill. If they choose to do it, it looks okay. But otherwise we have to find money out of the operating budget to pay for it. So that model doesn't work. So if they don't want to do it themselves because they're paying, I think that's probably okay because we'll have the revenue to do that work.
And that money won't get pushed into other things that need to come up?
No, but the only thing I would say about that is some of the groups wanted to dictate if they did advertising, then it went to their field or they did advertising and offset their bill. We don't want to get into this offset position. If they want to work to get some advertising there, we are, and I say we, because I see Wayne is on the screen there and Mary, the conversation was the money from advertising from fields absolutely can go into a fields account, which will support the fields. We'll never raise enough money. I am confident. I wish, I thought we were going to raise enough to maintain the fields in the way that we would all like, because I'd buy us new bleachers first and foremost. So we have some big asks out there, but I think it's fair to say the money comes to the school. It can go into a fields account. I just don't want somebody else to think that they have the ability to say how it gets spent from that account. And Wayne can speak to this.
Yeah, I was gonna say, Colleen, can you unmute Wayne, please? And Colleen?
I just wanted to note that Boys and Girls Club does pay and they have paid. And they've never had a real issue with that, just to clarify that.
Consistent with this or?
Yes, that these rates, that's what they pay in the house.
So they'll actually get a, a discount, won't they, Colleen? Cause they're going to be getting 15% discount now. So won't it actually?
If they're a nonprofit, yes.
Yeah.
I believe that.
Yep.
Wayne?
Wayne?
I don't understand the logic that if they pay, if they put up advertising and pay us, that if we don't let them keep the money or something, that that's going to be a disincentive to advertise. I don't understand that.
They're, well, they're going to the effort of getting, getting the advertisers.
Okay.
Right. They're doing, reaching the vendors to fly. I think they're, they're figuring that they're going to work. So we either would have to take that on, right? If we're looking to get the advertising. But I think that's the, the argument is that they, they want, they feel like they're going through the work and they want to have some, you know, saying that.
I'm, I, to be honest, I'm sick and tired of being held hostage. Well, if we do this, you have to pay us back. No, we don't. And you know, for them to do donate work and then for us to have to take it off is not a donation. That's a prepaid. And then now you're getting into tax issues. And that's why I said, I'm not gonna have anything to do with. Because this convoluted thing of this person has this deal, this person has that deal. And you want to tell me what to do with the money. My understanding by statute, the only person I listen to tell them what to do with the money is the superintendent of the school committee. It's not AVLL. It's not Maynard Youth Soccer. So if you donate, if you decide you want to donate, then you donate. You don't twist our arm to say, well, you gotta take, work it off. That, that's a prepaid. That is not a donation. And you know, that, well, if, if, if we, we get the advertisement, we don't, that's a disincentive. Well, you volunteered to do that. We didn't ask you to do that. You can't go out and do something on your own and then put a gun to our head and demand that we give it back to you.
Oh, Wayne.
I know. We feel very passionate about this.
That clarifies the discussion we had. If anybody wanted to know, that's the clarity that we now have.
About, um, the maintenance. So do we have a discovery of how much they pay currently at Keenan or at Fowler to do whatever maintenance that they do that we may not, we may have to absorb? Do we have a clear understanding of that?
No.
Can, is there a way that we can, I think maybe we should get that, just so we understand what we, if we're basically going to start charging them and they actually.
There are numbers for Fowler Field. Maynard Soccer told me numbers, but I, I don't remember them off the top of my head.
It'd be great if that could be shared and also Keenan, like if they have like seating or whatever it is they do. I think that would be helpful to understand what the expense that we would need to be absorbing as a district. Does that really offset what we're charging? Are we still needing to subsidize? You know, does the, do the fees really work? I don't know. I just, I wasn't sure about that part. This would be helpful.
I think I heard with Fowler Field, they're paying somebody to do it. So it's like actual costs. But I think with Keenan, it's friends of people who are coming to do it. So I don't think there are actual costs.
I think Keenan, actually the guy who does the DJs, I think he also does. So there is some costs, but I don't, I don't, I would be good to understand what the numbers are, the, of actual expense, full expense and upkeep for those fields if we are gonna be charging and taking on maintenance of the ones that we're saying we are wholly.
I kind of worry that we won't be taking in enough money to make up for, to actually pay for the maintenance that they're doing, doing right now because they're not paying upfront for the maintenance. They're getting it donated in some cases.
But we may have to adjust the costs down the road. They're, they're still going to be responsible, correct me if I'm wrong, Brian, but they're still going to be responsible for doing their own specifics, having to do with their sport, like Fowler, the, the soccer group tried to say some of the, the things that they were trying to offset the cost was things specifically for them. And I remember Michelle Rosendis at the time saying, no, those are specific for you. You, you know, you still have to absorb those costs, but we'll take care of the, the general maintenance.
Correct.
So.
I think the MO, MOU with the town, like for alumni, like painting, like for games and whatnot is like some of those, like we would, we, we, it's like a pass through. So like if a, if a committee or organization needs lines done or whatever, then they can order it. We get charged, but then we can expense it back or, you know, whatever to the organization. There's some language in there that, that is maybe could be used as a good basis for, for this also. Maybe look at that and see if that could be also added on maybe into this, like, you know, costs above whatever will also need to be. So it's not just you're renting it and that's it. It's also any other additional modification. You know, expense that would be over and above, like line painting or things like that, which DPW does do on occasion. And would cost us money.
We can use the same language from the MOU. Right now, what used to happen is what you described. People would ask DPW do it and they would build the school. But now the new language is they can't do it without permission from us first.
But.
So we can use that same language that's already in existence for that field.
Yeah.
My other question was, do we know, um, do you know how much money the yoga is costing for the year?
I, I'm gonna ballpark around 35,000?
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Elizabeth is muted.
Hi, okay. So I have a few questions. My first question is, so just to follow up on what Hillary already asked, I was just wondering. So we're voting to, to approve that these costs are going to be the costs that are actually charged. Is that right? So once we vote on it, then these will be, and then there is no other thing we have to do with the town. Is that correct?
There's a task force that's happening.
On their side.
And they'll include us. We're part of that, but we.
They won't affect our costs.
Right. Okay. Okay.
And if anything, right, if anything, we'll educate them on what we're doing. So it might actually help because they don't charge for Crow Pack, I think now. So maybe we'll start. So.
It's policy, right? The policy that Justin was trying to get done, like uniformly across all fields.
Okay. Okay. So then, so, okay, so that, so enough, so once we have approved this, then we're all set. And then, and then after that, it goes out to the town and they decide what to do with their fields. I got that right?
Yes.
Okay, great. And then my other question is, yeah, to also to follow up on what she said, I think that if you, if we do this, then, then having some kind of form where it is clear what everyone would have to pay would be good. Because I had a lot of questions about that too. Like, for example, the kitchen staff for $35 an hour. I was unclear if that was each person or if there was a certain number of people you'd have to have, you know, in place if you're gonna use the kitchen. And then I imagine if you use the kitchen, then you'd have to also have to have, you know, a custodian there. So maybe some kind of write-up that, that is clear to us and to the, to the people in town, what they have to think about if they're gonna actually rent the space out.
Yep.
Be good. And then back to the vaccines. I just want to mention that the other news today was, or last night was also that the boosters are approved for, for both kinds of vaccines now. So I think that that's another thing we have to think about as you think about the 8%. So I think that that's another thing we have to think about as you think about the eighty percent um numbers in the schools and as we think about potentially having um uh, um, uh, clinics, then maybe the boosters are another factor that we should be thinking about that everybody's coming up on meeting. Because these vaccines, even if people are eighty percent vaccinated now, you know, I know that, you know, my husband's vaccine is running out soon. You know, mine's coming up pretty soon. So you know, we're getting to the point where that's all going to shift. So.
Okay. Good point. Thank you.
Yeah, that's it. I think that's it.
Thank you.
All right. Everyone good? Hillary?
One more. Um, this is probably for Colleen. Does Girl Scouts current, I heard Girl Scouts doesn't currently pay to rent rooms at the school. Would we, does this mean we're just going to start paying, charging Girl Scouts too?
Yes, I've already been in touch because I'm involved with the town Girl Scouts. Um, Girl Scouts and Boy Scouts historically have done something in kind for the district. Either campus cleanups, um, football cleanups, um, things like that. So yes, going forward, they will be under the nonprofit and they will have to start to pay.
Oh.
Oh.
Natasha.
I just thought, sorry, when you said that Girl Scouts, it, I'm thinking more, I've been thinking like really the outside part primarily, but the music, I know that those music rooms have been a source of um discussion.
Can't hear you.
Oh dear.
She's playing the piano?
Natasha, your synthesizer isn't working. There you are.
Shoot. Okay, I was, okay. Can you hear me and see me now?
Now.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Um, so music. Oh, now I think I got, um. How is that? Are they also aware? Um, have the MMA been, have we talked to MMA or the music department about those rooms that are back there? Because that is also space. Is that not? How's that going to work?
Are you talking about the instrumental lessons that the individual instrumental teachers come in?
Yes, that space in the back where.
That has always been really, really loosey goosey and we have never, ever been notified of who was using those.
Mm-hmm.
And that's been a bit of a contention.
It was a huge problem. The past couple of years. Yeah.
Yeah, because they use the space for free. For one, we let people come in for, I'm, I'm a little uncomfortable that we have no awareness of who comes in the building. So one issue. And two, um, and I think they, they work with students. So I think that's one thing I would like to get a little bit more of.
And they charge their students.
They, they charge and I understand that they, it's.
Yeah, I've talked to Kevin Kosek multiple times.
Mm-hmm. So maybe. All right, someone needs to drop the hammer. Wayne?
So Brian and Wayne, maybe a discussion about that, that need.
We can talk offline. I'm not clear how they get in. Like if I don't have my fob, I can't get in.
At the end of the day, the doors are open, like for Fowler, um, after school care or um.
Okay. Yeah, we'll talk about that. I'm glad you brought that up. I was not even on my radar.
And it also will be, I, just prepare yourself because there's a lot of advocacy about not charging. Just like with everything else.
Right.
And I see Wayne already preparing with, um, but I'm just, I'm letting you know, it has come up because obviously they don't make a lot of money and there's the argument of how much. And I think the MMA has on their website, like who they vendors or musicians that they recommend. So it might be definitely, I think, a Kevin Kosek and Cindy Blanchard conversation.
Another point is anyone who rents our facilities needs to submit a certificate of liability insurance. So these musician teachers do not do that.
Wow. And also if you're on, if you're dealing with students in a one-on-one, like Corey check.
Corey check, yeah.
Right.
Same thing.
Are they not Corey tracked?
It's not a school-sponsored event, so it's not required.
Yeah, we definitely need to nail that down because that's been bone of contention for a bit.
And never seen. A little bit of structure there for sure.
And if, if anything, I think what we're doing right here more solidifies that, okay, now everybody's going to be treated the same. So. Yeah.
It's, well, for me, it's the safety issue too, on top of it. I just.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay, that's it. Now for real.
That's it. Anybody else? Anything else? All right.
Um, the only thing I have is um that a citizen reached out and would like to turn the skate park at Green Meadow, which is the sort of uh, I don't know, flat area. It's kind, I, I believe it's got some asphalt laid down, but it was an old skate park that the town was in charge of and they would like to turn that into an ice skating rink. I directed them to talk to Justin, Brian, um, and Rob Rulo about that. Justin replied that it traditionally has been under the town's purview. However, he believes that that could be within question. It could be the school's purview. Um, I expressed some issues with liability, especially at pickup and drop-off. Um, and that there would definitely need to be some sort of fence or something around it. So it's in its early stages. Um, this person is going to go to the CPC for funding, but they need to have approval from both the town and the school first. And I will keep you updated as I get more information and this um this progresses. I don't know how much further it's going to go because Justin didn't sound real uh, sure about it. And I don't feel very sure about it just because of liability issues. Um, the other thing Justin said was there, there isn't a hydrant that they could use. So they'd have to figure out another way of getting water to that space, which I think is going to probably end the conversation right there. Um, but anyway, I just wanted you to be aware of it. Um. Yeah.
Where is it?
So you know, at Green Meadow at, at um
The Crow Parking Lot.
Lot, just beyond Crow Parking Lot. It's where they've been shoving all the snow when they clear it in the winter. It's, it's in the summer. You can see it. You know how the, there are those big boulders? Um, when you walk up to Green Meadow, it's sort of just took behind and to the right of the boulders and it's an asphalt. Um, I think it used to have a fence or something around. I don't know. It's in total disrepair now, but it used to be like a skateboard park.
Right. You know where people hang out at pickup?
Yep, sometimes.
Yeah, it was a disaster when it was a skate park. Um, it had to be, it had a fence around it. Um, Joe Magno at the time, I think, was the um WAVM director and he had to go every night and lock it and every morning to unlock it. And because of the liability, yeah, it didn't last very long because of the logistics.
Yeah. Um, and so I, I, I don't see this project getting legs, but um I just want you to be aware of it. Um, and then the second thing, and Mary, you're going to be more interested in this probably than the rest, but the um bottle refill station at the Fowler, have you heard? You know about this?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. I didn't know if you had been notified yet or not, but.
Yeah.
It's leaking, right?
Yeah. Well.
Well, no, it's, the motor has completely broken.
Oh, I thought it was leaking a couple of weeks ago.
Grade. And because we have five hundred students.
Right.
Um, and so much use, it just got burned out. So now it's completely shut off. Uh, what I would like to see is if we can investigate turning the water fountains into refill stations. I don't know if that's a possibility. Brian?
So we actually have two things happening right now.
Okay.
One is they've done exactly what you said for one of the fountains in the lobby.
Nice.
Um, so that's kind of an intermediate fix, which um, it, it's definitely reducing the amount of bottled water we're selling and allows them to fill their bottle, their bottles. It's probably not a great permanent solution, but it's a great temporary one. Wayne, I'll give props to, he reached out or was reached out from, by a company who installs that, a commercial grade version of what we had installed into an existing water fountain. So Wayne, if you want to just give, you talked with them, you can give a better overview than I can um, of what we're potentially looking at.
That would be fantastic.
So there was a new state contract that came out that covered um bottled water and water dispensing units. And um, now with Fowler talking about they needed twenty-five cases a week. Um, so I reached out to them. Um, for those of you that don't know, state contract uh, does a number of things. One, it stops me from having to get multiple bids. The state does all the labor. It also guarantees that with that company, if you go with them, that you're going to get the lowest price. Uh, the third thing it does is order to get on the state contract, they made several concessions to be picked. Um, so when I saw that, I reached out to the four vendors that were part of that state contract. Um, and said, this is my situation, you know, come talk to me about uh, what you may have in your inventory as possible solutions. So the representative from Quench came out um and gave me a quote and um somebody from another company um has reached out and they're supposed to be coming out. So um, once they come and kind of talk to me and, and, and I tell them what I'm looking for, then I reach out to Bob on, in facilities to say, okay, on the backend, you know, the, 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 the machine that they're going to put in is only three foot wide. The hole that's coming out of is five foot wide. Can we make it work? That type of thing. So I am looking for more permanent solution. Uh, because while the bottled water um is relatively cheap, the logistics, because the usage keeps going up and they keep running out and um, if we have something permanent, then we don't have to worry about that.
Thank you for that.
I'm also wondering for the bottled water, is that, uh, um, does that come under the single-use plastic ban that, that the, the town just passed? No?
I don't think so. No.
Okay. All right. Just a question. Um. Okay, so that's it. That's all I have. Uh, member, thank you, Wayne, for, for looking into that. That's very, very helpful. Um. I hope that we can get that done. Uh, okay. Members uh, reports and comments. I will start with Elizabeth.
Nothing to report since the last meeting.
All right.
Yeah.
Mary Brinley.
Um, Natasha, do you want to do the budget thing? Because we already talked, thanks to Charles, we talked about the wellness. So that was good.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Go for it.
Um, are, are you, are you okay, Brian?
Yeah, go for it. Just don't forget to mention the school committee meeting change.
Yeah, that was, that's in my notes. Um, so uh, Mary, uh, the budget subcommittee is recommending that we amend the upcoming um, school committee meeting that is currently scheduled for December second to change it to December ninth to, and part of this will be, we, we were tweaking the FY twenty-three budget calendar that I will be um sharing with folks tomorrow. Um, that is basically to allow a little bit of breathing room to incorporate feedback um before we do the vote on the following week. And because of the holiday with um Thanksgiving and stuff, it just didn't allow a lot of time. And also with the understanding of trying to get information to the school committee early on, it, it wasn't going to give us a lot of time to have a discussion, provide feedback before we were going to get a second presentation. So anyway, um, just, you know, Lydia, Brian, uh, Brian, we talked about it, but Lydia, just that, that would be the um change. So for everyone's calendar.
I don't have a problem with that. It does, anyone else? Is everyone else available on the ninth?
And then we're going to keep the sixteenth also, so we have two consecutive weeks.
All right.
Yeah.
Sounds like a party.
So that is one of the bigger things. Um, just as I mentioned, we did some final tweaking to the FY twenty-three budget calendar. Um, so I will be um incorporating that and just finding and circulating that to the school committee um, tomorrow. One of the things that uh was to be kind of determined, Mary and I um felt, and Brian is going to speak with um, the building leaders to see how we can get their feedback also in sharing the building level budgetary needs. We've had this before historically and um, so how, how, when to be determined. So how Brian will kind of work with Mike and the, um, I know Mike and Charles have done it before. So they might be able to see how we can um squeeze that in somewhere. Um, so that will be probably a little asterisk. Um, future at a future, a future meeting. And it would be maybe just like a ten-minute, you know, of each presenting of what their building needs are. And I think in the past, we've used that I think as a school committee because it helps inform us, but also for the following year, once the budget is approved, it helps when we see the expenses. It kind of ties into like, you know, are the, Lydia, you're making me so damn hungry. Were you eating over there? You and Jeff over there. Now I got my, my stuff. I'm kind of. Anyway, so uh, that looks like really good, but I mean, um, so that, that would be, that's the only thing that, you know, to be determined. But everything else, the dates will be great. And then I think um, we can use this as a um, a template. I'll put it on the rolling agenda too, so we can have all of those plugged in for, for future planning. Um, the other thing, we talked about the cost centers and Wayne and Brian did a really great job uh, presenting um their recommendation. We did have good, robust conversations about administration budget and how as a cost center and for the building. And so Brian um, and Wayne received that feedback and then Brian had an idea of how do we um, maybe looking at also amending the policy for the salary structure that would complement the cost center conversation. Because I think based on recent um years of conversation, we just, sometimes we just want to have like expectations cleared out. So whatever we're approving that the superintendent understands that's what they're working with and vice versa. You know, so there's no questions about contracts and amount. And I think that would really help um set some clear, you know, no surprises. I think that's what we talk about in a workshop, right? No surprises. And I think that is really great to kind of put into paper, pen to paper there. So that will be um in the works and so excited about that. Um, let me, oh, let me see anything else. Um, I think that was it for the budget. We talked about, uh, we did talk about the survey that Brian was in the superintendent report and discussed that all the work that is really already happening from the facilities already. And having at some point um a call out or reporting out of, of, of that. Maybe the, just the community needs to really understand what is already being done, which maybe historically hasn't been happening in some cases and that can kind of highlight the work that's happening there. Um. And I think that was it for budget. Uh, policy, I mean, not policy, personnel. We met Lydia last week and we will have executive session to discuss that stuff. Um, and then CPAC, um, there are some collaborative events and just want to thank um Jeff for his, again, um, support for getting these events. We have three events that are going to be coming to Maynard in collaboration with Neshoba and some other districts. I still see you, Lydia. You're, you're not off camera. Good try. Um, the most, the upcoming one is called the Kerrigan Classroom. It's about reading. Um, and it's a, it's a, actually a teacher in Sudbury and who's um, and it's really about, I'll send a link out, but it's a really uh good collaboration about instruction for parents and reading comprehension. And it kind of feeds into some of the goals that the district is working on for literacy. And then in the spring, um, Sarah, uh, Sarah Ward, who really is um really great for executive function. She's going to be coming to, um, or coming to, oh, virtually giving a presentation in the spring along with um Nancy Dugan from Decoding Dyslexia. So um, some really exciting events happening um that parent events that, and again, Jeff, thank you very much for your, your support with that.
That's awesome. I love Nancy. I think Nancy's.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. So we're really, really fortunate to have all that work and um, and whatever, more to come.
Thank you very much. All right, next. Um. Mary said you, okay, Mary.
Who is Hillary?
Hillary.
Um, neither of the subcommittees I'm on have met since the last meeting. Um, the diversity subcommittee is meeting next week. Um, I did go to the human relations committee meeting this past Monday. Can I talk about that briefly?
Absolutely.
Um, okay, so they had um Amy Lovelace from the Council of Aging talked about um how to uh, apply for fuel assistance. But then they had, um, I think her name is Emily Black, who is. Uh, apply for fuel assistance, but then they had, um, I think her name is Emily Black, who is the social worker for, um. The jail diversion program out of Concord District Court. Who works with Maynard PD and six or seven other towns around here. Um, normally that position is intended to do social work related to mental health, um, and substance abuse. Cases that get involved with the police, um, it turns out she's, um, spending an enormous amount of time in Maynard. She's actually located in Maynard three out of the five days of the week and doing quite a bit of work for Maynard the other two days of the week. Um, Maynard's needs are significantly higher than the surrounding towns. And we are the only town in her program that doesn't have a full-time town social worker. So she's doing her jail diversion stuff and then she's trying to help out with. Um, like the police department said they have people calling cause they're lonely and they wanna talk. Um, so those aren't people who are involved with the criminal justice system and would typically be referred to her. Also not within what the police work on, so they're referring them to her. And she's trying to help people with housing and with other things like that, so. I had mentioned to her that, um, the school had talked about hiring, uh, general social worker to deal with the wraparound. Services based on the needs from last year, um, and are collecting data. But that personally, I thought that this should be a town thing as opposed to a school thing because. A general social worker for the school is only catching families with kids in school. And even if the council on aging is catching family, you know, elderly families that are having social work needs and. Police department is catching, um, families that are involved in criminal justice system. And we're catching families that are involved at the school, if there's all these needs, there's also people who don't fall into any of those categories. So I had asked her about data and she said she collects lots of data because her program is, um. Under the Department of Mental Health, the court system. And Elliot Center, she collects tons of data for all different purposes and it's really easy for her pool stuff. So she talked about pulling things in general, um, and I think she could probably coordinate with us as we get data from the school side. Um, one interesting takeaway was when she explained all this, Krista Silva is the liaison there. And he said it was abundantly clear, um, I wrote, I, I wrote down what he said, actually. Um, he said, uh, actually I don't have where I brought it down. He basically said, based on her presentation, it was really abundantly clear that we need a town social worker. And he recommended that the human relations committee. Talk to the new health agent that's starting, I believe, November eighth about how that could work in Maynard. And then send the recommendations to the select board for appropriations. Um, he said if we're the only ones that don't have it and the fact that she's here the majority of her time. Shows it, um, and I think that could be combined with what, what we, what our data could be, can make a pretty good case.
Hillary, yeah, sorry, um, Hillary, do you think this is something that we should bring up at the meeting?
Exactly what I was gonna suggest.
Yeah. Okay.
In that meeting, I mean, at the, uh, they let me speak and ask some questions of her on Monday. And I had said that I had talked to a couple of the select board members who didn't seem to think there was a need.
Hmm.
Um, so now I've spoken to two of them and then not in depth, just really. Just sort of blurring out, I thought we needed one, um, but now like a third, a, a third member has been included in a conversation about it, so it may be a good time to include everybody.
I think they can hear it often enough.
Let me tell you right now, I brought it up at the subcommittee, a town budget subcommittee, and this was like maybe in the spring.
Yeah.
And I was told by Greg that we're not in the social worker business.
Yep.
Actually, what he, you know, and I think maybe, maybe the awareness wasn't feeding up to him, like the need, so I, you know, maybe they were, it was like a buffer and he just wasn't. Really understanding the demand, but that is. There was resistance there when we were talking about like ESR funds and what the, cause I was advocating that maybe instead of all the infrastructure, that maybe they need to put money. For, um, for a social worker, because we were having it, that's the feedback we got from the nurses, right, we have all this stuff and. And the response was very tip, yeah, lukewarm at best.
Yeah, both David and Jeff had said they hadn't seen the need, but I thought about it some more after that couple of conversations. I don't know that they would see the need, where if someone is talking to the school social worker already. They might bring up what other issues are going on in their life, if someone is calling, people call the police for everything, so they're hearing about the issues. You know, the, but I don't think people call the select board because they, you know, need fuel assistance or therapy or. Whatever their issue is, so I don't know that they would be, they would find out about the need. Any other way.
About the fuel assistance. Two years ago, that was discussed in the, um, budget subcommittee. And I asked, you know. If we could add something to the M-Star bills or whatnot, where people could provide donations towards. Helping other people offset their bills. And I was told that they had done that previously and nobody participated, like there was like. One percent of people actually donated money and it wasn't enough to make a difference and so they just stopped doing it. Um, I don't know if that would still be the case now, but that was, that was something I was quite shocked. To hear about, but.
Well, it would be, and it would be interesting to use it as a pilot, since we've got the ESR funds at the town level to just do it as a pilot for a year. Take a little bit of money and see how much of a need there is, seems like that would be a good way to go, but I think we definitely should bring it up on Tuesday.
Yeah, okay.
The thing that the human relations committee talked about was they, um, initially intended to have a youth member and an education member. Um, in addition to a clergy member and those seats aren't filled, um, so, uh, I thought that was interesting and then, um.
Well, nobody reached out to us about the education, but if, if I can talk to Kathleen and find out.
I think Jen Goddett was on their list at one point, when I looked at a list of members, but, um, I don't know.
Looking for someone from the schools or from the school committee?
I think it was the schools initially only because I saw Jen Goddett's name on there, but, um, I'm not sure.
I had heard that also at one point.
Okay, I'll ask, I can ask Kathleen about that.
They may wanna liaison with the school committee, I don't know, I didn't ask that, but, um, they were just talking about wanting a student, um, their, their youth member left.
Yeah, well, he went to college, so.
Yeah.
Speaking of youth members, when do we get ours?
Um, is, that, I will check with Chuck and Kevin, um, I don't know why, it took a long time last year because of COVID. Because everyone was remote, but they're in class, so they should have their school council set up by now, I would think. Brian, you're muted.
Sorry, I will check with Chuck tomorrow morning.
You don't mind?
I don't know.
Okay, that'd be great.
And maybe you can put it in your, in the week report if you.
Oh yeah, tomorrow's memo, if, if.
If you're able to get information from them.
Yep.
We're losing Wayne.
Me too, it was a me too.
Oh, I'm sure we're losing Jeff as well.
So a lot of rubbing eyes.
Alright, everyone's spoken though, right? Okay, we're gonna go to executive.
Sorry, I was just gonna, Brian, you were gonna talk, sorry, no, 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 I already, I didn't wanna talk, but, um, I'll take this opportunity. Brian, you were just gonna update us on the Green Meadow on, yeah.
I can do that, I'll do the short version.
Yeah, that's all.
We had the MSBA meeting, it was Colliers did a really nice job preparing us for that meeting, um. We had a dry run with them, we were prepared, Wayne, Justina, myself, um, and it's.
This is in the, for the memo or, or, or we're?
Or the designer selection to narrow who's gonna get interviewed. Um, so you, uh, we're on a Zoom call, there's. I think they have nine members, we have three, so it's, and it's, and they're well-versed, they're architects, they're liaisons with the MSBA. They, they know the business, um, well. They looked at their proposals in a different way than we did, you know, in a more in-depth, I think it's fair to say they understood the information probably. Better than we did, um, but we, Colliers did a really nice job of prepping us. To share what we thought, what we envisioned for Green Meadow and what we thought were strengths and weaknesses of. The existing companies that we were looking at and Wayne did a great job just talking about the money and TAPA. Um, which is clearly why they got no votes, uh, or it's one of the reasons.
I don't know that they know about the TAPA.
So TAPA was the firm that was part of the high school build and there's just been mechanical issues since it's been done. And Wayne was able to articulate that in a financial way, just about the bills that have come in, so there were concerns and one of their members. Even said that back at that time, they did have some holes and there were some issues which he's. Um, his understanding is those have been revised since then or resolved, um, but understood why we would have concerns. And there were different members who had different visions of the different companies, there was sort of the swing toward one of the companies that they're excited about. That does not have a lot of experience with MSBA, none actually.
Yeah, I don't understand why they're so excited about her, I really don't, uh, but anyway, sorry.
No, that's okay, you're right, we didn't either as a, as a committee, so we weren't, and we went in there with three. Uh, three firms that we were excited about, DRA, MVG and Arrow Street, those were kind of our top three of the six. And we came out with DRA, MVG and Tarowski two. Which interestingly enough, Tarowski two is actually on the list of several of the members, it just didn't make the final cut for our committee. So we left with those three feeling very good about that, um, so we do interviews. A week from Tuesday, not just coming Tuesday, a week from then, we'll interview these three firms.
Can you, can you send it, like in the memo, can we put those names, I'm just curious to hear about them, um, and I remember Justine was saying that. TAPA got selected by Winchester, she had listened to them.
Yeah, which is maybe one of the reasons that they were sort of a non-issue for us, cause they just got a word on a project, which now meant they would have had. I wanna say probably three active projects, if not more, most of the companies seem to have one or two active projects. And if they just got one ten minutes prior. So yeah, I will include that in the Friday memo.
T two, actually, both Wayne and I liked a lot, um, they're small. They don't have as much experience with DRA and MVG, um. But they recently did an elementary school that is now a model MSBA school. And I really liked, I liked their process, I liked their design. And I, I really liked their attitude in general, just from what I read, so. I'm actually, I'm not disappointed, Arrow Street was the firm that I worked for, for years. And so I had to recuse myself and I'm not surprised actually that they were. Um, looked over because they do have a tendency to run above budget.
That was the only comment that worked against them, I think, one of the members on the MSBA. He commented on every firm's, the number of active projects and where they rated, um, cost expense-wise. And that was the comment about Arrow Street, they tended to be more expensive.
Yeah, and I don't know why they can't get it together, I mean, I worked that from like two thousand six to. Two thousand four to two thousand eight and, um. Uh, that was a complaint back then too, so the fact that they still haven't changed the way they, they bill or do business is. Obviously, um, I don't know, maybe they just have richer clients or something, but, yeah, Hillary.
Um, I just lost internet for a minute, are the ones you're interviewing, DRA, MVG, and I want, and what was the other one?
Tarowski.
I said he's gonna put it in the memo. Cause I, I have my hand in a chip bag right now, so I'm not writing anything down.
When are the interviews?
A week from Tuesday, the.
Twenty-sixth is that?
Uh, November second, I believe.
Okay, so it's, yeah, okay.
November second.
It's the same day as the data equity.
Um, alright, so moving on. Um, I am now moving to go into executive session under MGL chapter thirty A. Uh, section twenty-one A, part three, to discuss. What, huh, what?
The consent agenda.
Oh, can't we skip that, just kidding.
If there's no issues, you can have it in one vote.
Yeah.
Well, what are the warrants, I, I need to, I will be, um.
We only have one warrant. Is it just twenty-two dash oh eight?
Oh, eight.
Yeah.
Not the one recently, just.
Yeah, just twenty-two dash oh eight.
Yeah, I will, um.
Recuse yourself?
Yeah, I will not be, uh, well, I will abstain from accepting.
Okay.
So that could be a roll call vote.
If there are no objections, I would like.
Oh, sorry.
I would like to, um. Accept the minutes from eight sixteen twenty-one and the warrant twenty-two zero zero eight.
Yeah, so I would like you to take out.
I'm gonna do a roll call.
Oh, okay, okay.
Mary Branley?
Yes.
Elizabeth Albota?
Yes.
Natasha Rivera?
Abstain.
Hillary Griffiths?
Yes.
Alright, Lydia Clancy, yes, so those are approved, now we will adjourn to executive session.
And just as a heads up, two oh nine will be the same.
Okay, great. To discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with unions, review of MOUs with the MESA and MEA. For the twenty twenty-one dash twenty twenty-two school year, since an open meeting will have a detrimental effect on the bargaining of the public body. And the chair so declares, the school committee will reconvene in open session in about ten to fifteen minutes. So that we can vote on this in public, um. Roll call to adjourn to meeting, Mary Branley?
Yes.
Elizabeth Albota?
Yes.
Natasha Rivera?
Yes.
Hillary Griffiths?
Yes.
Lydia Clancy, yes. We'll be back. And Jeff and Wayne, you.
Hi Wayne, hi Jeff.
Longer.
Hi.
Alright, so we are back. And.
I will make a motion that we. Approve. The MESA preschool MOU twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. Um, document as has been presented.
Second, anyone second?
Second.
Elizabeth seconded, okay, so we are approving the MESA pre-K MOU for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. Roll call, Mary Branley?
Yes.
Elizabeth Albota?
Yes.
Natasha Rivera?
Yes.
Hillary Griffiths?
Yes.
Lydia Clancy, yes, okay, do I have a motion for MOU with the MESA?
I will make a motion that we approve the MESA MOU twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. As is presented.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Elizabeth Albota has seconded the motion to approve the MESAs MOU for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. School year, we'll call vote, Mary Branley?
Yes.
Elizabeth Albota?
Yes.
Natasha Rivera? Hillary, uh, you froze, Hillary Griffiths?
Yes.
Yes.
Alright, there we go, Natasha said yes, Lydia Clancy?
Yes, did you hear me, yes?
Yep, we got you, alright.
Okay.
So.
And, question, um, I just realized, cause you, I think you need to sign on our behalf, we just have a motion that. We authorize you, cause I didn't, that wasn't built into the motion. So that we authorize you to sign.
We can do that as a separate motion at the end for all three.
Okay.
Um, so, uh, alright.
And then the MEA, is it the last one?
Yep.
Okay, I make a motion that we, that pending approval with the MEA, we approve the. MEA agreement for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two as is presented.
Second, Elizabeth seconded the motion to approve the MEA MOU for twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two, pending their approval. Uh, roll call vote, Mary Branley?
Yes.
Elizabeth Albota?
Yes.
Natasha Rivera?
Yes.
Hillary Griffiths? Uh, speak up. Yes, there we go, Lydia Clancy, yes, alright, so moved. Final motion?
I make a motion that we authorize Lydia Clancy to sign the MESAs. And the MO, MEAs, uh, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two MOUs approved pending this evening. On behalf of the school committee.
Second.
Second.
Alright, Mary. Alright, Mary seconded. Uh, the signing, uh, the chair's ability to sign all three MOUs with the MEA, MESA, and MES pre-K for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. Roll call, uh, Hillary Griffiths?
Yes.
Natasha Rivera?
Yes.
Elizabeth Albota?
Yes.
Mary Branley?
Yes.
Lydia Clancy, yes. Okay, so moved. We can now adjourn unless anyone has.
Thank you, Susan, Melissa, Carol.
Yes, thank you for hanging on.
Yeah.
And for your work.
Alright, I will entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we adjourn.
Second, alright, roll call. Here we go. Hillary Griffiths?
Yes.
Natasha Rivera?
Yes.
Elizabeth Albota?
Yes.
Mary Branley?
Yes.
Lydia Clancy, yes. Alright, thank you and good night.